For February 15th to order. I have a couple of changes for the agenda. The Nantucket project has withdrawn their application, so we will not be holding that public hearing. And the sewer permit issuance process is going to be deferred, so town administration has some time to come up with a more definitive report. Announcements? Libby?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This meeting is being video and audio recorded in accordance with the provisions of the open meeting law. The Wanna Comet Water Company Water Main Project, which involves the Prospect Street area, specifically Prospect Street, Atlantic Ave., Milk Street, Vesper Lane, Joy Street, Mount Vernon, is ongoing, and there are regular updates posted on the town website. This project is expected to continue through May 15th. Town offices will be closed Monday, February 20th, this coming Monday, in observation of President's Day. I have two quick things that came in after the agenda was posted. One has to do with a special week this week. It is International Random Acts of Kindness Week. The Department, our Department of Culture and Tourism, as well as our Nantucket High School Ambassador interns are hosting a community appreciation board project. There are various locations for this, these boards around town. One of them is in the town building, and you can stop by and pick up an appreciation card, write some appreciative comments on it, and post it. And they can be photographed and shared on social media as well, using the hashtag Rack on A C K. Also, quickly, the -- we'll tell you what that is later. Instructions for written comments for the Division of Marine Fisheries hearing that was to have happened Monday, but due to the weather, it was postponed. I don't think we have a date yet. If people are interested in providing written public comments to the department, the deadline for that is February 17th at 5:00 p.m. And they can go via email to marine.fish@state MA US. And I think we probably have this somewhere on the website, or can provide it if people want to give the office a call.
Anything else? Thank you. I have one announcement. I've got a request from a viewer, that sometimes the board members, as we speak, there's more than one of us speaking, and it's hard, difficult for folks to hear at home. So I know I'll try to do a better job of not speaking one another's, another member who has the floor. Is there any public comment to come before us tonight on a matter that is not on the Is there any new business to come before the board tonight? No? All right, Libby, approval of minutes, warrants, and pending contracts.
Do you want me to go right to pending contracts?
I'm sorry, I'll do, I'll do minutes. So you've, you've got the minutes as defined in the article, in the agenda. Any comments from anyone?
Nope.
Okay.
Just one quick comment, it was interesting. 2010, we were talking about town meeting and getting more people there, and pulling it out of a hat, or doing something else, because people were leaving after the articles.
Right.
Brian Chadwick was talking about that, and that conversation went up, you know, was going around a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
I just think it's interesting.
It is, yeah.
In fact, you're the only one on the board who actually can vote on these minutes. You're the only one of my members.
With clarity you can't believe.
You're giving them a lot of credit.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye. Opposed, no. Same with pending warrants, treasuries, treasury warrants, without objection, they are approved. Libby, pending contracts.
We have an amendment to a professional services agreement for the Sewer Enterprise Fund with Weston and Sampson. This is amendment number two. We discussed this at the beginning of this project. It adds $193,000 to the current contracted amount of almost $2.6 million. And this is, again, something that we discussed early on. It relates to work in connection with takings that will need to be done for the sewer project, easements, archaeological surveying and monitoring. And the engineers and the owners, project manager are here. If the board has any questions about that, the funding is available in the warrant article. And, again, we discussed it early on, that this would become--
So this is more of a phased release of funds as these work?
Yes. Thank you, yes. That would be a good way to put it.
Rather than, it's not additional work outside the appropriation?
It was, it's not outside the appropriation, no.
Okay.
Nope.
Go ahead.
Sorry. We have a professional services agreement for our Culture and Tourism Department with Atlas Pyrovision Entertainment Group. This is the annual, well, not annual, this is the three-year contract for the July 4th fireworks. The prior contract expired at the end of 2016. They not to exceed $141,000 or so for the three years, and we would ask the board's approval of that. We have a professional services agreement, again, with sewer, with People GIS, $17,700. This is for an additional module in the People GIS system that the Department of Public Works has for work orders, and mapping, and asset management, and things of that nature. The permitting process would ultimately go through this module, and there is funding available in the sewer budget.
And People GIS--
I have a lot of questions about this.
Yeah.
But it sort of ties to the sewer discussion that we're having later on tonight.
Well, if you have questions, let's raise them down.
Well, I, I can't really raise the questions until we have that discussion, so we'll just vote it through.
Oh, okay, okay. All right.
And at some point, we might want to come back. People GIS, you've got different departments? I mean, this is a, am I right about that, Libby? Or is this the only contract with People GIS?
We, People GIS is a system that we have at the Department of Public Works, and it is really geared towards public works, types of work. Again, work orders, tracking of projects, things, things like that.
So it's not something that's going to be used by other departments?
Um--
I mean, that's okay, I just want to--
I--
Because we're, we're looking at lots of software to do, purchasing, and lots of different things.
There are aspects of this system that could potentially be used by other departments, and at some point, it may be able to integrate with the e-permitting system that we have through a different software vendor called EnerGov.
Okay. So this, this is like a module that gets--
It's a module that's added to the existing system that we have. And I'm sorry, but for Mr. DeCosta's benefit, we said just before you came in that we do have the sewer permitting process on the agenda. However, I think the idea was, you're not going to like this, to postpone it?
No, I'm not going to like it.
Okay, just only because we were not able to get into your packet, a written overview of the process by Friday, by last Friday?
I still need to have at least a preliminary discussion about it.
Actually, we took it off the agenda, so we can, you can make comments about it during selectman's comments.
I've been asking for this for months.
No, I understand. So we'll put it on the next agenda, unless the board wants to reconsider the agenda at this point.
We'll bring it up under selectman's comments.
That's what I said, yeah.
Because if Bobby has points that should be made before some of this work is done, he should be able to make his points.
That's fine.
I think the idea with this module is to streamline the process more.
I'd like to have a discussion about it before we just jump into a $17,000 module.
Oh, all right. So I want David to come up and, who's going to give us a--
Uh, David could do it, sure.
Okay.
Give it a shot, I guess. David Gray, Sewer Director. The module far, as far as the sewer permitting process, Bob, has to do with the reorganization of the regulations and stuff. It's not just, this, the sewer permitting part is just one small piece of this whole thing. The regulations have to be rewritten to include all the grinder pump stuff now, all the low pressure forced mains. It's all going to be combined into one. I am in the process now of trying to streamline this whole sewer permitting process. It seems to be going very well right now.
It's not, I get where you're coming from, David, and I'm not opposed to this. My problem is, and I don't want to get off topic here, but I'm going to give my little spiel, because I think it's important for you to understand this when you come back. It's the cost to the home, to the individual in this town right now. Right now, we have the requirement to hook up to the sewer, is you have to have an engineer plan, $2,000 to $3,000. Then the DPW, Sewer Commission, your department, takes up to 30 days to review that section of the plan. That's what they tell us when we go in there and drop the plans off. So now we spent $3,000 out of our pocket to have a plan reviewed. They want cleanouts, they want everything on the private property, which, by the way, we as the town cannot go onto their property without their permission. Then, we put the pipe in, and we have to have an inspection done. Then, we have to have an ASBILT done of the pipe, again, all on private property. Then we hit them with a privilege fee. Then we hit them with a hookup fee. It's 25 grand before we're all done here, and it's just, it's out of control. We keep charging these people. We wonder why no one votes for sewer at town meeting. It's because they're looking at all these costs going, why would I want to do this to myself?
Well, this is all changing. The permit process now isn't even taking three days. I'm reviewing--
It's the cost, David, the cost.
I hear on the cost, and then the, on the ASBILTS, that's all going to change to, we're not going to need an engineer stamp anymore. It's going to be either by a professional land surveyor, or something like that. We have to have these measurements, so when we go back in the middle of the night for a backup on someone's property, we don't--
When do we go on somebody's property? We need to know where the pipe comes off the road into their property.
And what we're trying to do is get, so that people know, because they call us at all hours of the night, and they don't even know where their cleanouts are. If we have plans--
That's on sewer that's 100 years old, David. This is all new hookups. We're going to run pipe through 45 million dollars worth of Shimo and Monamoy. We're going to run the pipe. We know where the pipe goes onto their property. We should not have to have them have an engineer plan for us to know where we're putting our pipe.
No, but we're changing all that. That's all part of the process that's coming up.
So let's, let's, so we don't, let's just add this back to the agenda, so we're going to--
No, put it, let them get their presentation together. I'm fine with it. I just want to make sure you're clear where I'm coming from. It's the cost more than the process.
Believe me, I hear you. I hear it from everybody, so I know where you're coming from.
All right. Anything else, Bobby?
No, no.
All right. Next item, Libby.
We have an amendment to a professional services agreement for the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund with Commonwealth Resource Management Corporation to add $18,600 to the current contract amount. And this relates to some issues that are ongoing with the waste services agreement. We have a professional services agreement for Our Island Home with Public Archaeologically, Archaeological Laboratory, $17,900. And this is for the archaeological survey of the so-called Howard property, which is partially where the proposed new Our Island Home facility is to go, and this is in connection with that project.
Questions from the board about any of these items?
No.
Is there a motion to approve them?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Libby, citizen departmental requests.
We have an appointment to the council on aging. There is one vacancy and one applicant, Mary Ann Easley, and her application is in your packet. I don't know if she is present.
Motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you. Libby, why don't you introduce the next item and--
The next item is a request for a waiver of sewer connection permit fees and a reduction of the sewer privilege fees for 8 and 44 Duke's Road. There is quite a bit of information in your packet. This is a matter that came up quite a while ago, about a year ago, and I think the citizens would like to speak to how they feel this particular project proceeded. I sent them a letter in November, which they evidently have issue with, and I think it's all pretty well explained in your packet. There is, was a sewer extension project that occurred on Duke's Road. Admittedly, there was a lack of proper town notification to people about this project, which we have subsequently changed the way in which we notify people, and are working to improve that all the time, but it didn't happen in this particular case, and I'm sure the citizens would want to speak to it.
Would any of you like to come and speak to the matter? In your packet, board members and the public, we have the various sewer policies, we have what constitutes the, you know, a basis for waiving all or a portion of the fees, and your, and your letter, so.
We have seen the, the packet that you have, too. I'm Chris Witty.
Hi, Chris.
I live at 44 Duke's Road. If it's all right with the board, I, just for the record, I would like to read the letter if--
So we've already--
You've already read it?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
All right, well--
It's in the packet, it's been, it's been, you know, in the public domain since last Friday, so.
Okay, well, we've all wasted a lot of time beating around on this topic. The only thing that I can speak to is, you know, where we are at this point is, I believe these waivers, you know, what we're asking for is really, at this point, something to take away a very bitter taste that has been left in our mouth for what has turned out to be a Kafkaesque process that has been going on. The letters started, well, they started over a year ago, and actually, the, the whole sewer process itself started in March of 2015, when we woke up to some notices on our doors that basically changed our lives, so, and I speak for everyone on the road when it comes to that. Not that everyone on the road got the notices. So I, you know, rather than kick the ball around the court one more time, we would just appreciate your consideration as to what's been done, and it's good news to know that the process has been changed, because it needed it.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come and speak to it for--
My name is Marjorie Trot, and I live at 8 Duke's Road. Thank you for letting us address you. It's taken us almost a year to be able to do that, so thank you--
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you for hearing us out. And Libby, thank you for trying to address our concerns. So we're just asking, because of, even in recompense for the amount of time it took us to get that information about what was happening, since we had no information ahead of time about this sewer, that's part of what we'd like you to consider in, in considering our waiver request. Because as Mr. DeCosta pointed out, it's a huge expense that was thrown at us. We figured it's going to be 25,000 to 30,000 each, and that's a lot to not have had any voice in the process on while it was going through. Everyone else on the town sewer, which we would have been part of, had a chance to ask questions ahead of time, to vote whether it went the way they wanted to or not. They did have a chance to be heard, and we, we were denied that. So, thank you all very, very much.
Thank you. Board members, you've got the letter in your packet, you've got the various policies. Any comments?
Mr. Chairman, one comment on the policy for the sewer fee waiver requests, which essentially, as I recall this, tries to sort of, I think of it as pre-authorizing waivers when we have affordable housing matters at issue. But I don't think I ever assumed that this policy meant necessarily that it was the only reason for a waiver. There might be other reasons that people seek a waiver, and I didn't think that this precluded that. And this doesn't have any bearing on the current application. I just wanted to make that point clear to the board. You may feel differently in that, that this is meant to be the only, and I underline only reason. I didn't take it that way. I took it as a sort of a, almost an automatic waiver request when affordable housing is part of the issue.
That's probably something to, important to clarify, because then we might have a difference of, different board members.
We could have different opinions, yeah, exactly.
So we should talk about that at some point. Anyone else have a comment?
Well, if nobody else does. I mean, clearly, this was a difficult issue for everybody. I mean, I sat on the Board of Health when the Board of Health extended the time to require hookups, and I think we recognize this was not like the Harbor Watershed Sewer Project, where the town was very much involved. This was, this line was only put in to request an initiative of a private developer, and the people along the road were caught up in that process. So, while I might be sympathetic to that, I think we have to recognize that a waiver for one here is going to be a waiver, should be a waiver for all. They're all in similar circumstances, everybody down to the specific lots that were owned by the developer, so.
Just a couple of comments. First of all, I'm sorry you had that experience. I can understand from your perspective how that was, you know, created anxiety and uncertainty. I guess I'm, I'm in the, in the category of those who believe that those, the policy is, you know, the only, the only draws, that draws a circle around areas where we give sewer waivers, but I may be in a minority, so that's kind of my view on this.
I'm kind of not clear how much of a waiver we're asking, they're asking for, and what the impact would be.
Well, it's in their letter, they're asking for, Libby, do you want to?
Maybe I didn't--
I don't think it's a specific amount. It just seems to indicate a reduction.
Can I--
It was a waiver of the, of the hookup fee and a reduction in the sewer fee.
Okay.
Hookup fee is how much?
$2,000.
And, and in--
Sewer privilege fee, $500.
Yeah.
No, sorry, $500.
Right.
$500 if you connect by--
For the connection fee.
By, by within a certain amount of time, wasn't it?
Right.
Yeah.
Which is going for us as we, October of this year. In addressing the waiver for one as a waiver for all, about three meetings ago, when we first brought up this issue, it was suggested that if anyone else on the street wanted a waiver, then they would, we would have to separately ask for them, hence, separate letters for the two of us. The rest of the residents knew that, they probably didn't want to go through the steps, or I don't know what, but maybe they had more money than we do, but that's, as far as that goes, they all knew that it was up to them to apply separately.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Chris, before you go--
Yeah.
Walk me through this again. The hookup fee's $2,000, you want to waive that down to $500?
No, we're asking for a, basically a $500--
Charge.
Reduction in--
And what is the full charge normally?
It's $500 if you connect within a certain period of time when sewer goes by your house.
The connection fee is $500, and then we were asking for an arbitrary reduction in the sewer fee.
You're asking for the waiver of the $2,000, completely?
No.
No?
Okay. The fee is typically $2,000, but if sewer goes by your property within a certain period of time, if you connect, I believe it's two years--
Yeah.
You could, you are subject to paying only $500.
To be incentive, and incentive to get them to hook up.
Is that the only waiver they're asking for?
Yes.
And they've got an extension for that through the board?
That's the only waiver they're asking for?
So you're out of pocket cost now?
Well, originally, we were informed they would have to hook up in six months.
But your out-of-pocket cost now is a bucket of $500, another bucket of $500?
Oh, no, our out-of-pocket cost will be--
On the, on the fees, the town--
The connection fee will be, I think the connection fee is $500, period.
Okay.
And that's what we're asking for the waiver on.
Okay, all right.
It was $2,000, it was reduced to $500. You're asking a waiver of the $500. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay. We have to--
Yeah.
It wasn't reduced, Bobby, it is automatically reduced?
They're asking for it to be reduced to $500.
No, no, no. The way it works is, we are required to hook up, even with the extension. The extension enabled us so that rather than having had to hook up within six months, originally, the letter we got, which was March, March of--
We got an extension from when it started, which was October--
So originally, we, it went in in March of 2015, the sewer. We got a letter in October of 2015 saying we had to hook up by April of 2016. So we were given an extension until this October to hook up, which still--
At the cost of $500.
At the, I believe--
Yes, $500.
If, if, if that's within the two years--
Yeah.
It's a $500 fee.
Yeah. And you're asking, what are you, what are you asking to do about that?
And we're, we're asking to have the connection fee waived, and completely. So whether that's $500 or $2,000--
So it's $500.
I believe it's $500, but I'm not a sewer, I'm not a sewer regulation expert.
But we all have to hook up by October.
I get it, I get it. I'm going to make a motion that we waive the connection, the $500 connection fee, provided that they hook up by the October 17 deadline.
I'll second that.
Been made and seconded. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I'll, I have to say no because I, because of my earlier comments, but, all right.
I understand your comment about other people on the road, but, you know, I do feel that if they choose to apply, they ought to receive the same treatment. They are all subject to the same issue. And, and, you know, if it's a matter of paperwork, they can just copy your paperwork and file it tomorrow.
That's fine with me.
Well, I'm just saying, I don't--
So do you think we should send a notice to those folks?
Well, I think you might consider that before you make them all go through a hassle, because I think they're, you know, I, I just feel it's the same issue for everybody on the road, and the, the difficulty they all had, you know, at the, at the Board of Health, Marjorie and Chris were there, but lots of other people were there, and they all felt they went through sort of this similar rigmarole, quite frankly, so.
Yeah, I, I'd be in favor of a letter going out from either this board or town administration, making people aware of it, just so we're consistent.
I think that would be helpful.
If I can make one general comment, it's this, is, you know, there's probably not been a more stronger advocate for sewers on this board than myself.
Right.
I believe it's the only way to solve our water problem, quality problems with the ponds and harbors. And I think it would behoove this board, with future boards, because I won't be here, to really look at waiving these fees. It's a small amount of money in the overall project, but when you, when I was informed after we voted and approved the, the funding for Shimo Monamoy, that everything was going to be low pressure, it's a substantial additional cost to each homeowner. And I don't, I, if that had been, that information had been released at town meeting, I wonder if we would have gotten the vote through. So, you know, it's $500, doesn't sound like a lot of money in the overall scheme of things, but it is to the individual homeowner, so that's why I made the motion that I made.
So, and just to help us all a little bit, I appreciate that, Bobby. Any developer who's developing on one side of a road and is required to put in sewer, and puts the sewer down that road, the folks on the other side of the road, under our sewer policy, should be required to hook up, because the line's running down the road. And that's, and that sewer line is going to be paid for, hopefully by the private developer. But those people would be required to hook up, and I don't think it's the same issue, hopefully with proper notice and all that, but just to be alert. It's going to happen in other situations.
And the solution might be is to look at, look to the developer to help defer the cost for the individuals on the street. If the developer's making a bunch of money off the deal, he should have to put up a little more money.
That could take care of it right there.
And I know you've, I know you've deliberated over this over the last couple of years before I got on the board, because I know it was a problematic topic.
And I think that's the point, Bobby, is, you know, $500 isn't a big deal to some people, you know, but it is a huge deal to other people. And I, and some of the people that are gaining are gaining substantially more than $500.
Right.
You know, the, they pick up sewer, and the next thing, you know, their house is twice as big, or they get an extra lot, or something else. There's no problem for that one.
And then you add in, Matt, the $500, and then you add in if you have to have an engineer plan, and--
And the privilege fees, I understand.
It builds up quickly, that's--
But the same, what I want to, but I think what we have to be careful about is, is not, maybe not a blanket waiver, because we want to be waiving for the people who need it, and not for the people who are, you know, if this guy at the end of Monamoy's benefiting $2 million because he's got an extra lot, we don't have to waive that money.
No.
So we have to, so I don't think this is--
You have to look at them all individually, you don't just--
I dare say, I don't think you're going to be swamped with letters about this, but--
Yeah.
I know it's not going to be the topic of conversation while I'm walking down.
Well, sometimes it's the precedent, though. Well, sometimes it's the precedent, though. And if it's easy enough to, oh, my lawyer sends a letter and I save two grand, I just think we have to think about it, that's all.
All right.
Thank you all, thank you so much.
Anything else on this? Thank you for coming, appreciate it. The next item, public hearings, open a public hearing to consider amendments to the Nantucket Town Sewer District pursuant to Section 10 of the Nantucket Sewer Act regarding Articles 16, 19, and 77 of the 2017 Annual Town Meeting. You have in your packet, is there anybody who's going to be presenting this?
Well, I can just let you know why it's on the agenda, which is, as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, that the Sewer Act requires that amendments to the sewer district have a public hearing. And depending on what happens at the public hearing, there needs to be a subsequent vote at town meeting. And that vote is either a majority vote or a two-thirds vote, depending on how the board, acting as sewer commissioners, votes the amendments. We have a practice whereby the Director of the Health Department, Director of Planning and Director of Public Works, now Sewer Director, review the parcels requested to go into the sewer district under certain criteria, which is in the packet. And I believe they are recommending that all of the parcels be added. Two of them are town-sponsored warrant articles and one is a citizen.
And we also have a letter from one of the people on Drew Lane, who has asked that this, they asked a conditional request to remove his parcel from the sewer district, just so board members are aware of that. And as Libby said, if we approve it after the public hearing, that there's a lower quantum of vote that's required at town meeting.
Right, the real substance of this is what, two-thirds or 50% vote? So, we know what we're doing? Thank you.
Who would like to come and speak on the matter of this public hearing on adding these parcels? No one? All right, I'll close the public hearing and we'll deliberate as a Board of Sewer Commissioners.
I see, Mr. Chairman, that the Kimball Wimber property scored an eleven, I think, isn't nine the cutoff?
Yes.
So, that's pretty high on the threshold.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a question about the scoring. There seems to be some crossed out yeses and nos in there. Was there discussion and things changed? What was the, yeah. Looks like one of my college exams.
Well, that was before me. I know Roberto did a little bit more work on it than I did, so I'll let Roberto speak to that.
Yeah, some of the ones that you see that got crossed out and switched over was when we got a little bit more information from what was in front of us. So, for example, we had originally marked that no, there isn't a soil problem there. And then it was just, when we looked at the, we pulled the file, saw that actually there's a clay layer in that area, and it was just, oh, yes, soil is a problem. So, we switched that. So, it's just when more information that we needed came available, we fixed it.
Bobby?
Only one really jumps out at me here, and it's, is there adequate capacity in the sewer system, pipes, and pump stations? That makes me a little nervous when we don't know what size pipe's there and we're going to add, what, ten properties to it?
Yeah, this is going to be no, the sewer pipes are leading down to C Street have plenty of capacity in the Cliff Road area. And we're upgrading this pump station as it is to a four-pump system, so capacity is not an issue.
Are you speaking to the question unknown on the checklist?
Yeah.
Yeah, did you see that?
Yeah, that was before my time.
No, I understand, but so that should be...
Should actually be deleted.
It should actually be a yes.
Yes, okay.
But then there's, is there adequate capacity in the wastewater treatment plant? And they marked it as a no.
Yeah, there's no cross out there, it's just a flat no.
That one, I honestly don't remember.
Is that just an error?
To be honest, I honestly don't remember that one. That one must be an error.
Yeah.
So...
Oh, wow, you know, that must be an error.
Yeah, I mean, if that was true, that would be like an absolute prohibition.
Right.
Yeah.
That's, that was, I was, one of my, that was one of my...
So, the more errors we find, the more questions come up about the validity of the rest of the documentation. So, can you allay any concerns we might have?
When we sat down and went through the checklist, one of us holds the checklist so that not all of us are sitting here putting a bunch of things and the wrong one gets sent in. In this case, it was Kara's checklist. We were checking, we are split into three separate sections. So, Andrew answers one section, Kara answers another section, and I answer a different section. I answer the sections of the septic system, Andrew answers the sections about zoning and things like that, and Kara answers the questions about the treatment plan. David was not available at the time, this was before his time as part of this group. So, those questions were actually answered by Kara. I do wish she was here to answer those questions, but she's not.
No, she's not. So, my question is, can you stand as to the accuracy of this checklist?
Yes, yes. And we have discussed it since David has started, and we're both in agreement that there is capacity, we are able to hold these properties. There is soil issues in that area for septic systems. We still recommend putting these into the district.
All right. Any other questions from board members?
No, just to comment, though, on the capacity one. I assume someplace there's a sort of a running calculation every time we add...
Total or tally.
Yeah, like a sewer bank or whatever.
We are doing that, and also with a lot of the II stuff that we're pulling out, that gives us more capacity. So, as we move forward with the CMOM and the removal of II, that's going to continue to add.
Could you sometimes circulate sort of the current status of that so we all can see that it exists and see what the number is?
Yes, yeah.
I'll make a suggestion that I do on some of the, similar to what I do on some of the yard sale programs, is I think a checklist is great as, sort of like, to get the, you know, thought process and to follow the same thing every time. But I think there should be, you know, there's three articles, there should be three reports, and that, you know, all those things should be answered on each report. It might take another 20 minutes, but that way we keep a running tally and we don't find out 10 years from now, oh, yeah, we haven't really been counting that, we forgot, which is sort of...
No, that's fair. The reason we only did the one checklist is because it was only the one citizen warrant article. The other two were town sponsors, so...
Well, yeah, but even on a checklist, though, we get a checklist, but what I'm saying is I'd love to know that we're, on a lot of this stuff, you need to have a sort of historical memory. And unless it's written down that we found a clay layer, you know, on the thing with five, we found a clay layer, yes, there's adequate funding, we have so many, we have so much, we have this much capacity in the system, yes, the pipes are fair, whatever, just, you know, so that, because what happens is if we do the checklist and it's told one thing, and then there's a problem, we go back to say, well, wait a minute. And then we start looking, we should be able to say, okay, this is what we've got wrong, let's not get it wrong, let's fix what the problem. You know, sort of what David's talked to me separately about is how much we have going on.
Yeah, with the changeover and stuff, now is the time that we can change policy and stuff, and David and I have been in conversation.
I'd like to have you amend this checklist because as it goes into the history books, we want that...
We don't want that to say no, so absolutely we can fix that and get that over.
So, any other questions before we go for a vote?
Well, the only thing...
We're on the sewer commissioner.
On the, was it Mr., was it Howell, Peter?
Yeah.
That sent that? I'm willing to, I'm willing to keep him included as long as we have some, when it comes time to comment, as long as we comment that we're not, you know, we're not saying we'll never do a betterment. You know, I don't think we necessarily have to better those two or three properties because we should treat them similarly to all the properties that were in that article, and they're included with that. But I don't think we want to be putting ourselves in a corner on some future situations where we might want a better part of it. And so, as long, I'm willing to leave him in and, you know, and agree not to pursue it on this one, as long as we have wording that we have that option in the future. I just don't want this to make a precedent that we never charge betterments ever for sewer anywhere.
I think that should be a separate consideration. Right now, we're just talking about two-thirds or 50%.
Right.
And I think that's all we're doing.
That's the action we're looking for now.
Right, but we had a request to pull himself, I guess we have to consider whether we pull him out or not separately.
Well, it's already, you can't pull him out, so you want to tell...
You'll have to amend it.
I thought you said we couldn't...
Yeah, it's already in the warrant and it can't come out.
He'd have to amend it and tell me.
Or we could put a comment in when it comes back from FinCom.
You're free to have a comment, of course.
Okay.
So, I'll make a motion to include these in the sewer district.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you. The next item is Town Manager Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are going to have a brief presentation on our new municipal aggregate program. It's called Nantucket Power Choice. Our Energy Coordinator, Lauren Sinatra, is here, and we're going to go over some of the FAQs that have been occurring and maybe a little bit of an update of what Lauren's hearing about the program.
Good evening to the board, Lauren Sinatra. Last month, I had the pleasure to introduce Nantucket Power Choice, the town's new municipal electricity aggregation that launches next month. I have invited Marlena Patton from Perrigan Energy Group, who is the town's consultants, to provide the board with an update of the program launch and to walk through the frequently asked questions that we are receiving. So, with that, I introduce Marlena, and I will remain available to answer any further questions.
And I think just for the board, one of the purposes of this agenda item is it's part of the public outreach, so that's, we're not asked to take any action or, tonight.
And we may invite members from the audience to ask questions at this time if they're unable to meet, to come to our public forums tomorrow, if that's okay. Thanks, Lauren. Oh, am I driving? Do I advance it with the one on the right? Okay, great. All right, nice to see you all again. Thanks for having me back. And Lauren is right, we're on the cusp of launching the program. And what launching will mean, it means that on the first meter read after March 1st, for everybody that's an electricity basic service customer in Nantucket, they're going to be automatically enrolled in the program unless they opt out. So, that's happening starting next month. So, just a quick review, we have been able to negotiate a program price that is significantly lower than the National Grid residential basic service price, which is right now 9.787 cents a kilowatt hour. So, when the program launches, everyone who's automatically enrolled will have a price of 9.03 cents a kilowatt hour for the supply portion of their National Grid bill. So, that's a big drop, and if you multiply that by the number of kilowatt hours you use every month, then that's what your savings would be. So, I wanted to give a quick update on the customer support, how that's going. So, the outreach piece began with a mailing, and that mailing went out to all the National Grid basic service customers in Nantucket, and 11,924 pieces went out. And so, that's kind of our starting point for figuring out how this whole initial launch period is going. And since then, we've had 518 opt-outs, meaning 518 account holders have contacted us or Agara Energy, which is your electricity supplier, and asked not to participate. And that's an opt-out rate of 4.34%. And that's notable because we typically see higher rates than that when we're on the cusp of launching a program. Now, I anticipate that rate's going to continue to go up a little bit. Tomorrow is the deadline for opting out if you don't want to participate in the program at all. And there are usually a lot of last-minute people who think, oh, my goodness, the date's here, now I'm going to call or email. So, this number will tick up a little, but it's on the low end for what we typically see for opt-out rates right before program launch. We've seen rates as high as eight or nine percent sometimes. We have three opt-ins, so what that means is anyone who already has an electricity supply contract on their own will not be automatically enrolled in the program, but they have the right to call up and ask to join. So, three account holders have done that. Then we have also within the program an option for 100% green energy. It's a little bit more expensive, but you have to choose it. You're not automatically enrolled in it, you have to call up and ask for it. And actually, I got an updated number on that right before I came over today, and we're now at 44, and that will seem small to you compared to the 11,000 mailers that went out. But actually, for most communities, we see maybe 15 less. So, if you look at it that way, Nantucket actually is looking very strong from the enrollment in the optional green offering.
And I'll tell you, the phone wasn't working two weeks ago, the phone number for that green program.
For Agara Energy?
For you guys, for calling up to sign up for the green, there was no answer on it. Because I had a friend who tried to do that, and they tried two or three times one day to get through.
Okay, well, that's not good to hear.
So, maybe it could be slightly higher.
Maybe it could be higher, yeah.
At least one person higher.
That's unfortunate. If your friend is still interested, I'd be happy to get their information, and we can have Agara call them and make sure that they get opted in. All right, so now I'm just going to take you through some of the questions that seem to be coming in. This is for anyone in the room who has these questions and may be looking for an answer, and then also any of you members of the Board of Selectmen, if you find yourselves in a position where you are asked these questions, you might find it helpful to have these answers. So, a common question is, who is Agara Energy and why are they chosen? As it says on the slide, they're a retail electricity supplier, they're based in New York, they're founded in 2014. The town chose their 12-month contract after reviewing Agara's financial information, after reviewing their customer support information, and after checking references for them. Their customer service was strong, their 12-month price offered the best value for the town. And I can also tell you just from my experience working with many suppliers, I've been very happy working with Agara. This is my first time working with them, and they've been incredibly proactive in their customer support follow-up and in offering data to us about how things are going. So, the town chose them, and so far, I can tell you that working with them has been a positive experience. Another common question is from the summer residents, does it make sense for me to participate in the program? I personally got a call like this just a couple of days ago. The answer is there that it might, and it really depends on what that summer basic service rate is going to be. So, National Grid's basic service electricity supply rates change every six months, and the next time they're going to change is going to be May 1st. We don't yet know what that price is going to be. So, what we tell folks is wait until then to decide to opt out. If you stick with the program now, you're not going to lose, the rate is lower than National Grid right now. If you're not in your house, you're not using any electricity anyway. And then in late April, those basic service rates for National Grid should be posted. And at that point, folks can decide if this is the right deal for them. We also tell them that we're anticipating an increase in regulatory costs this year. The basic service price is made up of two components. One piece of it is the actual electricity price, and then another is a bunch of regulatory costs. That regulatory piece is going up this year all over the state. And we don't know if that means this summer, the National Grid price might not drop down quite as low as it has traditionally. Usually, you see a drop in the summer prices and then they go back up again in the winter. We don't know if that drop is going to happen, or if it does happen, if it's going to be as significant as it's been in the past. So, it may be that the program continues to provide a good value for summer-only people. The best thing, though, is just to wait and see. We don't know for sure, we can't make any promises. So, we're telling folks to just kind of hang in there and wait till those prices come out. Another question is, I rent my home, do I need to get my landlord's approval? The answer to this is that it's all about whether you are the account owner or not. This has nothing to do with the property ownership, it's just if you have the electricity account, you pay the bill, you get to make the decision about whether you participate. A common one is, I have a contract with an electricity supplier, will I be automatically enrolled? As I mentioned before, the answer is no, you won't, but you're welcome to join. That's those three opt-ins I mentioned at the beginning. If you want to participate, just check your contract with your supplier so you don't get hit with an early termination fee before you join. And if you want to join, you just call Agara Energy. Another source of concern is whether the relationship with National Grid will change if you participate in the program, and the answer is no. National Grid remains everyone's electricity delivery company, that does not change, and that's their job, they're going to continue to do that job. You're still going to get a single bill from National Grid, you're still going to pay National Grid, and you're still going to call National Grid if the power goes out. And National Grid isn't going to reduce anyone in priority for repairing the power outages just because you participate in the program. They're agnostic whether you get your electricity through them or through someone else, because this isn't the part of the bill where they're making their money off you. All right, so there's another piece on the letter, the letter that went out, there's a little asterisk that says, at some point, the price might go up by a tenth of a cent. Why is that? What's that about? What's that about? And that's because the town may choose to add a tenth of a cent to the price to support solar projects, but the town hasn't decided if this is going to happen. And if it does happen, there will be an announcement about a price change. And that's a requirement, anytime the price changes in the program, we would need to put out an announcement. How do I participate? This goes back to what I said before, if you're a National Grid basic service customer, you'll be automatically enrolled on your meter read date, first meter read date after March 1st. You will see the change on your April bill. This is important for anyone that comes to you and says, I thought this program started, I got my March bill, it started in March, and I don't see that I'm in the program, it still says basic service. That's because electric bills look backwards at the previous 30 days. So their enrollment will happen on their March meter read, that's when they get switched over to the program price. And from there forward, they'll get charged the program price. So starting with the April bill, you'll see Agara Energy and the program price on the bill. This is a really common question, and people call up and think the program didn't launch or something went wrong. Do you have to participate? No, the door's always open. If you don't want to participate at all, and you want to get out before the program launches, tomorrow is the deadline for that. You would need to call or opt out online if you haven't already sent in the reply postcard that accompanied the letter. If you don't opt out by tomorrow, though, all is not lost. You are welcome to participate for a time, and then opt out later. There's no minimum duration, there's no early termination fee, the door is always open. Anyone who misses that deadline would find themselves in the program for one month, and then they would, if they opted out, say, a week late, they would just get opted out as of their next meter read date, because the opting outs always happen on your meter read date. And then if anyone has concerns about whether their budget billing changes or their low-income discount changes, neither of those things change with this program, those things remain in place. So tomorrow, there are two community information sessions at 3 o'clock at the senior center and 4 o'clock, or sorry, 6 o'clock here. And these are open information sessions, anyone is welcome to attend, and I will be there. A colleague is going to join me. We're going to talk through basically this, these types of questions and answer questions, anyone who wants to bring their electricity bill, we're happy to go over that with them. And then the program website is masspowerchoice.com/Nantucket. And on that website, you will have access to the information I just provided, as well as ongoing access to a comparison between the program price and the basic service price. If you have questions, Lauren is fabulous and very articulate on this, articulate on this program at this point. Town Consultants is my company, me. And then also, we have a brochure that Lauren worked very hard on and is outside the door here, if anyone didn't pick it up. And we'll be bringing these to the public information sessions as well, and this covers a lot of the same questions, so.
So while we have the consultant here, is there anyone who's here in the audience tonight that has a question they'd want to bring up? Okay. Thank you.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
What is the price difference for the green choice?
The green price, it's...
I just didn't see it in here.
Yep, no, it's in the brochure. It is 9.576. So it's still below the basic service price. Basic service is 9.787, so green is 9.576. It's like two tenths of a cent.
Do you know what, does that primarily come from solar?
No, so that's a great question. That green is primarily from wind. And specifically, Nantucket has made the decision to prioritize local, meaning New England, projects as much as possible. They're the most expensive to buy energy from. The state law for 2017 requires a minimum of 12% from New England-based renewable energy projects. This will have 32%. That additional 20% will come from wind projects in New England. And then the majority of it is going to come from wind outside of New England. And then there's a small amount that is legally required, regulatory required, renewables and alternative energy sources make up the balance. Yep.
When you say Nantucket made that decision, who made that decision for Nantucket?
That would be the Internal Evaluation Committee comprised of members from the FinCom, Capcom, Finance Department, and myself. And we were unanimous in all of our decisions.
I just want to make sure, was it somebody in the back room going, "Beep"?
There were a number of green choices, and I think this was one of, kind of the middle of the road. It wasn't the cheapest green option, it wasn't the most expensive, it was the middle of the road option.
All right. Thank you.
In total, like, people are asking me, in total, it's about a 6% savings on your energy portion, if I did the math right.
Well, it will depend on how much, like, your actual savings depend on how much you use every month.
Yeah, well, that's, but it's 6% on this, the portion of what it is, and if it's half of your bill, it's like 3%, give or take a little bit.
Yeah, I don't, I know the dollars, I don't know the percentage. Yeah, it's not enough to buy an island in the Bahamas, sadly, but it is, it is something. And how much it is, like I said, it really depends on how much you use and when you use your energy. Yep.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you very much.
Libby?
Thank you, ladies. Implementation of Town Employee Health Insurance Plan Design Change Process. As the board is aware, we spend a lot of time routinely trying to look at ways in which to reduce town employee health insurance costs. And this process is allowed for under the Massachusetts Health Insurance Reform Act of 2011. We've initiated this process previously in 2011 and 2012. It is virtually the only process that does not require traditional collective bargaining in order to achieve the kinds of cost savings that you would need to achieve through things like a reduction or increase in the employee contribution to health insurance, or changing the plan, or things of that nature. And in our case, a lot of those things are specifically referenced or required in collective bargaining contracts, so they have to be negotiated out. And that has been a pretty difficult process, and we haven't to date reached agreement on either contribution changes or plan changes. So this, we have been talking to our health insurance consultants frequently lately, and their recommendation is that we initiate this process. We have, you all, I believe, are familiar with it. And what this does is allows, through a particular process, which involves getting together a group of employees, deductibles and co-pays will change. And depending on how much they change, there is a significant savings to be had by the town. In the first year of the change, 25% of the savings is meant to go, required to go back to the employees in some way. So per prior discussion with the board, we are planning to implement this process shortly. So this is just an announcement, there's no action required by the board.
And we did this last time, what, three or four years ago?
In 2011, the board accepted the provisions of the act, so that is one of the requirements to initiate the process, that has already been done. So I'm just letting you know that it's going to be happening.
Any questions? Thank you.
Next, our recommendations regarding overnight commercial vehicle parking downtown. And I think the chief's going to give us a little bit of background, but while he's coming up, as the board knows, several years ago, we were getting, really seeing an increase in complaints as to the number of commercial vehicles parking overnight in the downtown area. So we made some regulation changes. However, we made more than one, and we inadvertently created a loophole, which hasn't, which has ultimately, up till now, I think, led to, perhaps, some might argue, just as many commercial vehicles parking downtown as we intended to try to eliminate. So we've been trying to figure out ways in which to address that, and this came up at a board meeting several months ago. And we, again, have been trying to address it, but it is going to require some additional regulation change. So our, we have some recommendations before you. We have met with the Nantucket Lodging Association representatives. They had a particular concern about the prohibition on, on overnight parking, and I know that there may be some citizens here who, who do as well. We have a letter from a resident of Harborview Way, Mr. Stiller, and I'll get that out to you all. Our recommendations, as I mentioned, will require a public hearing if the board so desires to take them up. So Bill, do you want to just give us a quick overview of the background, and then we can get into the recommendations?
Yeah.
So just to clarify, this is, we would have to go through a public hearing?
Yep.
And then rather than, than getting to know what all the recommendations were, we're taking the time tonight, so if we have questions, we want to do, make some amendment, we can.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, yes.
And in particular, we're looking for direction as to what you want, so that we can write a regulation to accomplish that. So kind of historically, there are several problems with the regulations. For instance, the existing regulation right now prohibits any vehicle that weighs one ton or more from being parked on a public street after 9 o'clock at night. You can, an F-150, which is rated at a half-ton truck, is actually 8,000 gross, or pounds, which is several tons. So these things need to be fixed, because they're apparently old numbers from sometime in past history, that maybe there were 2,000-pound cars out there, but not anymore. The commercial vehicles specifically, we started out in 2014 with a regulation that allowed for the issuance of a commercial vehicle permit for anybody who could demonstrate to the satisfaction of the permitting person that they actually had business to conduct between the hours of 2:00 and 6:00 a.m. in the morning downtown. An example would be cleaners for buildings, fishermen that have to be there to get their boats going at a certain time, different things like that. They could prove that that was the case, we could give them a permit, and that seemed to work pretty well. But then we started running into problems with people whose primary vehicle is a commercial vehicle, and they were feeling as if they couldn't go downtown and enjoy restaurants and the other services that are provided downtown, and risk getting, they'd risk getting a ticket if they were, if they went home by taxi and left their vehicle down overnight. So the amendment, the regs were changed to allow any, any vehicle, any commercial vehicle registered to a Nantucket address that's not a post office box to be issued a commercially registered vehicle permit. And that opened floodgate for all the vehicles you got downtown now. Many of the vehicles went out and started, changed their garage location on their registrations and qualified now for a permit. It doesn't say the owner has to live there, it says the vehicle has to be registered to a Nantucket address, not a post office box. And now admittedly, and to full disclosure, I think the police department issued some permits, even though a registration didn't say a Nantucket address, they'd produce an insurance certificate or something that would show Nantucket. That shouldn't have happened. Plus, there were some vehicles that were certainly too large, that were given permits that probably shouldn't have been, but the permit clerks don't have the ability to inspect a vehicle under the current regulations and make a decision on that. If somebody comes into the registration, it's a commercial registration, they give them a permit, if it's got a Nantucket address. We also amended the regulation at that time to change the hours from 2:00 to 4:00 a.m. So it was not quite as onerous in the early morning people coming to work. And then again, in 2016, in June, we modified it further to allow for persons that had livable board permits, that had a commercial vehicle, to be able to get a commercial vehicle permit. All in all, there's 17 of our $400 parking lot permits that we've sold this year to date, and there's 54 of the $25 commercial vehicle permits that we've sold to date. And those permits are good for the entire calendar year. So our suggestion, and specifically to the commercially registered vehicles, is we're going to have to do something to, to make a determination. The original intent of the weight discrimination was to keep semis from parking on the roads at night. And so that's why they said any one-ton vehicle couldn't be on the road parked after 1:00. The parking lots have a limit of 12,000 ton, or pounds, which is, what, six tons? And so we got to figure out, you know, using the weight, the actual weight, which is on the registration of the vehicle, is a, is a tool we could possibly use to determine what vehicles are going to be able to park down there and what are not. Keeping in mind, an F-150 is about 8,000 pounds, and a box truck is probably 10,000 or 12,000 pounds. So our suggestion partially would be to incorporate the language that was in the original language back in 2014. Once again, inserting a requirement that somebody has to demonstrate they actually have work to do at that time of the night to get a permit. That would eliminate a vast majority of the permits that are on here. It would still allow us to take care of the, the building cleaners, the, the, I don't know if there's a delivery that time of night, I doubt it, the fishermen, et cetera, that have demonstrated the need to be down there. And then as far as the Lodging Association is concerned, they have approached us, and they have a problem in that many of their customers are commercial, drive commercial vehicles that are working on many of the projects around the island, and there's nowhere for them to park at night, their vehicles. And so they have asked us if it would be acceptable to use the existing guesthouse permit that is issued to each guesthouse based on a formula of how many parking spaces they have and how many rooms they have. They pay $100 for the permit, and they can give it to a guest who needs a parking pass. They want that permit to become a year-round permit that would also allow commercial vehicles to use, which, you know, we would have to, again, look at that weight situation, and I'm not sure, here we're taking the decision out of the hands of the permitting authorities, and you're giving it to the hands of a clerk who's renting a room to determine whether or not a vehicle might be eligible or not. So that would be something we'd need direction on.
On that, while we're on that topic, if that's all right, is there a way to track whether that comes, you know, say a hotel gives it, and it doesn't come back? Is there a way to track it? Are they numbered?
Right now, if a guesthouse gives a permit out and it doesn't come back, they come to us and pay a $20, $25 fee and get a new one. And that's the only thing we can do. Now, what we do have, we do have, we watch those pretty closely, and in the past, we did find a couple of organizations that were, if their guests weren't using the permits, their employees were, and, you know, we revoked several of them, from them, and they had to come back and, and, you know, one of them, I think, had to wait a year to get theirs back, and the other one came back and made a case, an employee acted outside of authority and was discharged, and I think we gave them back. But we watched that pretty closely, but it is, you know, it is, this would apply the same privilege now to a larger class of vehicle that is, on one hand, is what we're trying to eliminate from downtown, but on the other hand, it is a problem for the guesthouses.
But it's funny, the guests, they were the ones that came to us with the problem. They, it was the guesthouses saying, geez, they're parking in front of our house, in front of our place all day. So it's coming full circle.
It all goes full circle. If anybody got any questions, I don't, there's really not much more to add to it.
So recommendations.
So just, specifically, the recommendations would be to prohibit all commercial vehicles from parking overnight in the specified area that's already identified in the regulations, and from the town pier parking lot, unless the vehicle has either a residential parking permit or a guesthouse parking permit, or the permit the chief was talking about, which is very, very specific to a particular type of work. This didn't really come up in the chief's remarks just now, but we have been talking about expanding the Two Fairgrounds Road parking lot and implementing a paid parking system for commercial vehicles only. Non-commercial vehicles would be able to park there at no charge, so that we can provide a place for commercial vehicles to park. And lastly, just as the chief had said, to allow the guesthouse parking permits to be utilized year-round.
Are we going to tighten up how you get a residential, commercial parking sticker?
Yeah, I, I, the way to get a residential, commercial parking sticker is, is number one, and I have, I'm going by memory here, so I might not be entirely right. It's, my reflection of the regulation is that a person's eligible for one per household, one not, one commercial vehicle not registered to them, but registered to a company, if they live in the commercial area in the residential parking district. And that person can then come to the station, they can apply for a residential parking permit for that vehicle, their company car, and then as part of that, we give them for free a, one of the $25 commercial vehicle stickers also.
All right, so what about the guy that lives in Sconset or Maticket? Has a commercial vehicle, it's his only vehicle, he comes to town, he has a couple too many beers, he takes a cab home, he's going to get a $50 ticket.
Yep.
Chief, there's got to be a way to figure this out. Now, come on, Steamship does it, not anybody can just drive in with, and get a, get a excursion rate, because their vehicle's garaged in Nantucket. Now, we got to figure out the way to do this. Bring in your utility, bring, Bill, bring in your, your rent, bring in your tax bill, bring something in so that someone who lives here has an advantage over someone who doesn't.
Well, the regulation isn't written for somebody who lives here. Nothing in the regulation right now restricts it to people that live here.
For the people that live here, because that was the whole intent, was to give the person who lives here, who has one vehicle and happens to have commercial plates on it, the ability to come to town and have a good time and do the right thing. Otherwise, we're going to have people driving their vehicles home when they shouldn't be, and God forbid, something happens.
Okay. So what happened with the current problem? The regulation says a vehicle registered to Nantucket, and it further says that the owner or their agent can come and get the permit. And now what some of these people have done is they've gone to a local contractor and said, hey, I'm doing work for you, here's three registrations for my trucks, take them on down there and get them. So we have a guy, you know, from Nantucket standing there getting the permits for these trucks.
They're not his trucks. They're not his trucks.
They're not, they're registered to a company.
So, so again, if they're registered to a company, the person who's coming in has to own the company, or have...
I'm not sure how we would prove that.
And we say one vehicle per company, there's gotta be a way, I mean, the Steamship does it, they do it somehow.
Well, they, you know...
You have to be actually on the street list.
So make this on the street list, if you're not on the street list, you don't get it. You know, if your name isn't on, if you're not an officer of that corporation and you're not on the street list, you don't get a permit. I mean, I, I get your difficulty here, but I think we need to, I'm just trying to protect our local residents somehow. They're the ones that end up suffering, because these guys that are parking, they're off-island, they'll just park and get the $50 ticket, they build it into their contract. But the poor local guy gets the ticket and he has to pay it.
Yeah, honestly, I agree with you on that, but I also know that a lot of our local residents are the ones who are facilitating the abuse. And so I, I, you know, I'm kinda, I'm kinda between a rock and a hard spot on this one.
I know, and I'm trying to make it easy for you, so maybe we do what Matt says. We say you have to be on the street list, and if it's, if the vehicle's registered to a corporation, you only get one, and you have to be an officer of that corporation.
Okay.
I mean, is that, that seems like a, you know, a compromise, it seems, because we're all used to it, for the Steamships.
Most of the guys that I'm talking about that have commercial plates on their, on their trucks, they're a one-man show, they just, they, they have a commercial vehicle because that's the only vehicle they have. If you're a big corporation, chances are you've got a personal vehicle and a corporate vehicle. I'm not worried about that corporate vehicle, I'm worried about the guy that's, you know, whether he's a scalper, or he's a one-man carpenter, he's got a commercial plate on his truck. I mean, the option is, is you get rid of your commercial plate and just run your business out of, with a regular plate, because it's not like that ever really gets enforced anymore like it used to. When, when I was younger, Billy Burnick used to pull everybody over and say, where's your commercial plate, you know? So, it's...
Your insurance goes down.
Yeah.
It's not cheap, so...
Okay, so would that, I mean, does that, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, that may be something for us to go back and examine, but I think quite frankly, the issue that is, the target of the enforcement is the larger commercial vehicles. It's not somebody's pickup truck that has a commercial plate on it.
No, and that's what I'm saying.
There is a segment that Bobby's talking about, then there's the, then there's the trucks that you wanna get off, off the street.
Right, but I just, I think the segment that you're talking about isn't the segment we're going after.
Well...
Well, I mean, it'd be nice to be able to, you know, help both.
I mean, I, I agree with what you said, chief, I think any of these box trucks or big vans with names and stuff on them, they shouldn't get a permit at all. You know, unless you, unless you're a resident downtown and you have a lease that says, I live on Fair Street, and this is my vehicle, which that comes under a whole nother purview, but if you've got a truck that's, you know, 22 feet long and has your name on the side of it, you're not driving to downtown to have dinner on Saturday night. You're, you're parking it there because you're getting on a boat and going to the mainland. So those, as far as I'm concerned, shouldn't get any stickers.
Well, to, to, to sort out the types of vehicles that would almost require a personal inspection of the vehicle before it's permitted.
And maybe that's the solution, is you inspect it one time, and then when you come in to renew the, renew it, if anything's changed, well then obviously you'd have to have it inspected again.
Or, or the weight, the weight gets you along, along the way, you know, 1,000 is too little, but maybe it's 5,000 or so, I mean, it gets you somewhere.
It'd probably be 10,000 and above.
Yeah, what, what an F-150 or an F-280 is, yeah.
True, but they, I mean, that would be one way of doing it, we could look at doing it by that weight as registered. So, what I'm hearing is you want it...
Once you have, you know, the recommendation is a blanket policy, which is no overnight parking, right? And once you start, you know, veering away from that, you're gonna have enforcement issues and, you know, complexities, and so I think it's important that, let's pick, let's pick the topic that we want to accommodate, whether it's what Bobby's talking about or something else, and then let you all figure out a way to do that. So is that, is that to accommodate this group, is that something the board is in?
Well, I think, I think that's how we've gotten where we are now, and sometimes, you know, I warned of the loophole when we did it.
Right.
And, and at the time that we did it, and so, and I think parking was under such, such pressure for it, it's such a high commodity, and these guys figure out the rules. I've been walking since December and, you know, walking a lot of the streets, and there's a few cars, and they go to Westchester, right where the edge of the enforcement is, and they park on the sidewalk all weekend, or for five days in a row, blocking the sidewalk on Westchester, because they know they're just outside the area. And that happens, and I just, I'm walking past there quite often, but it's happening in other areas too, and the people that live there are suffering. You know, the people that, you know, that, that all of a sudden they have no sidewalk, and they, they have, you know, there's, there's cars parked in front. There were people parked in front of my wife's 30-minute, you know, for weeks, a week at a time, two weeks at a time, and it's 30-minute parking, her customers can't park there. And a couple of these were guys that had run down to the boat. So I just think it's, it's sort of, it's, it's a big issue. And, and I think some of this, we're just tweaking around the edge, and we have, at some point, we have to, it, it has to be more than just bylaws. At some point, there has to be a charge, and we have to identify the vehicles and start charging for the hour, and increase the amount, and eventually, you know, that'll take care of it. I think we're sort of, we're trying to be Nantucket 30 years ago, and we aren't anymore, so...
So, I think one of the complications, or we got plenty of time to work on it, because I, I think in theory, we've sold 54 permits for a permit to people that's good for 2017. So unless we're willing to entertain a regulation that revokes those permits and issues refunds, and however that's gonna work, I'm not sure, then really, whatever we do really is for 2018, I think.
Can we put, could we, could we vote a hold on it tonight, till we sort it out? So we don't end up with 150 of them parking all around downtown in the summer?
We have to go through a public hearing.
I understand, I'm just asking that as a question, because it seems we knew this was a problem last year.
Yeah, I don't, I, I would've said yes some time ago, until I think one of the last opinions from town council was something like this, you had to have a hearing even to do that.
Is that something you want us to investigate?
Well, if you're gonna, you might create a rush, like...
Right.
I haven't bought mine yet, because I don't park downtown in the winter, but I'm gonna buy one before summer because I need one. So, if all of a sudden now you say I can't get one, you might have a problem.
But I still, I, I still think though, Bobby, you're gonna prove that you're going to work at, you know, 3:00, 4:00 in the morning half the summer. And a lot of, and the guys that lived downtown, if you're a plumber downtown, you're, it's easy enough to prove. I live downtown and I'm a plumber, and I have to go on calls in the middle of the night sometimes. Might only, and so that, those people I think are covered, it's the...
The simple solution is to just say no commercial vehicles between 2:00 and 4:00 a.m., and that's it. The problem I have with that is that the local person who has, is a one-vehicle home, who goes downtown and patronizes the downtown businesses, and has a few too many drinks, which we've all been known to do, now has a situation where if he does the right thing, he's, he's potentially gonna get a ticket, he might not, or he says, I'm not gonna pay a ticket, and he then does the wrong thing. So, you know, there, it's a simple way, is to just say no vehicles, period.
And I guess the question is, what's that population of people who stay downtown until 2:00 in the morning?
Well, they, they stay till 10:00 or midnight, and then they, they say, you know, I'm not chancing, I'm not driving home, so they leave their car, and they take a cab, they come back in the morning and get it. They do the right thing, and they're being penalized for it. You know, we've, we've harped on people forever here not to drink and drive.
Maybe they should take the cab to the bar, and then take it back home again.
Here's another thing, what if, what if they came in with their, you know, the receipt from the cab from the night before, if they got a ticket, could it be easier just to waive the ticket after the fact?
No.
No.
And then they gotta take time off from work to go get away, you know?
So as, as Bobby said, the easiest thing to do was to, would be a blanket...
I didn't say it was the right thing to do, Mr. Chairman, I said it was the easiest, no.
And the trouble is, when we try to do the right thing, we, we ended up getting what we've got now.
Well, yes and no.
Well, that's, that's what we have now, so...
I think that there's a way to do it.
Well, we, and then also, we need some direction on the guesthouse thing. Are you interested in that, or what do you wanna do with that?
How many permits are we talking about with guesthouses?
Do you know? I mean, there, yeah, dozens, but some of the established, they can have up to 10.
It scares me a little, chief, is that, you know...
I, I think in the meeting we had with them, they indicated it was a pretty low number.
We're not talking about more permits, we're just talking about making them year-round.
Right.
Right.
So I guess, Mike, one question I had was, was really to Matt's question. If I have a, if I have a, if I give out a, I'm an innkeeper, I give out a permit, and it doesn't come back, that's like, you know, liquid, that's, that's like money floating around.
Well, but it...
And is there, how do you, how do you, how do you deal with that?
You're striking numbers with permits or something, you can solve that.
Could you do it like you do with the short-term lease permits?
Well, we were...
Days that, they book that room for so many days?
See, that's, that's an interesting thing, because here, here's the discussion that we had internally was, if I come to Nantucket and I rent a house for a week, I have to come down here, pay $10 a day for each day, and get a permit and go. But if I go to the Nantucket Inn, they hand me a free parking pass that they paid $100 for, that's good for the whole year. And so, we, we were talking about doing was getting rid of those placards and getting a window hanger that would number it or something like that, and that we could track and follow, but not, you know, getting those back would probably be a challenge. So it is, it is kind of a conundrum, but it's a definite impact on the businesses, because their, their people are being...
But these are businesses that were waived parking spaces because they were targeting people who didn't bring cars, and now we've got six, I mean, I'm concerned about how many it is. I'd like to know how many permits it is before we just give it a blanket...
I think it's a way to keep them going in the winter.
Would you like to make a comment?
Yeah.
Jamie Holmes, I'm here on behalf of the Nantucket Lodging Association, but I'm also a hotel manager. The ones that are bringing this up are the ones that are open in the winter. We're encouraging people to stay in our inns, we're staying open, and our guests, paying guests are being ticketed. That's what we're talking about, the people who are staying in the hotel, parked in front of the hotel, get a ticket if they have a commercial vehicle. Even if it's somebody who lives here, who has a commercial vehicle parked in front of our hotel, going to one of our specials, they still get a ticket, because Bill's department doesn't have a way to tell whether that's a hotel guest or whether that's an abandoned car downtown. So, there's 15 properties that are open in the winter. Each one of them was surveyed, and it's a problem. Costs them $50 parking to stay at the hotel.
Well, I mean, the, the hotels should have some internal way of monitoring it, where like if the guest doesn't return the permit, they fine the guest or something. And the, maybe there needs to be a, a penalty towards the hotel or guesthouse if those permits get abused.
Which there is.
And the neighborhood's gonna scream and holler.
More than $25.
If we give out 100 permits, there's 15 places, and we give each one five?
They, they get them, the guesthouses get them in accordance with a formula, based on the number of rooms they have.
So, of those 15 places, I'd like to know exactly how many it is, if there's only 15.
We can have that information by the... Do you know, how, you know, how many permits are out there?
No, but most places only have one or two. So we're...
Let's find that number out.
And we get them in the summer when it's even a bigger problem.
But it's not, it's not a 22-foot box truck in the summer.
Right.
Taking up two spaces in front of somebody's house. It's somebody's little car, you know? It's a big difference, because we hear it from, from, you know, down around Children's Beach, it's on Beach Street, it's on Eastern Street, it's all those streets, you know? And as soon as, it's not too bad over on that side of town right now, but as soon as the Steamship starts back up in April, they'll all park on that side of town, so that they can...
Well, now, it's, now it's Union and Orange, and people that walk, Town Lot is full.
You can't get a space in the Town Lot.
Yeah, big weekend, the lot is full of box trucks, and all along Union is full, I mean, it, it, it's, it's pretty substantial.
But I don't think those are hotel guests.
No, no, they aren't.
So, we're talking about a specific program that's already in place that we'd like to extend during the winter, and it is completely regulated by the police department, and I can tell you, if you don't do it right, you get told. I'm for one who was told.
I'd just like to know how many before.
Yeah, but, yeah, our issue, we're dealing with, let's, you know, so you've said 54 and 17, so say we have 100, 100 and, you know, 120 there, and then we give out 50 through the inns.
I think last year we had, at the end of the summer, we had 174, the number comes to mind.
174 there, and then we give, we give this exemption to the inns, and we get another 50 or 100. We're talking 200-plus cars that could be parked at any one time down there, and they're not all gonna be there, but it's a, it's a numbers game, and how many spaces do we have downtown? And where do the people that actually really live there park? If, you know, so really, it's, I think there's 900 in the core, 1,002 or 1,004 total, when you take everything else in. It's, it's, we're talking a quarter of it? Giving a quarter to this, giving our, giving our, giving our parking lots over to this? The ones that are, the ones that are, that residents wanna take when they take their kids off to play hockey? You can't, you go to, you know, you don't wanna get, you know, you don't wanna be parking in the, in the stop and shop parking lot downtown. You try to go to the town parking lot, there's no space, so you chance a ticket on the street. I mean, I think there's a lot of stuff going on here.
Did you wanna come?
How you doing, Fortramus? I was one for this, and I think it's been doing a great job over the last few years while it's in place, but we're starting to give permits out, you know, you're gonna start giving somebody a permit for a hotel, and the next thing you know is gonna be a friend of the hotel and say, oh, that's my carpenter, he, off-island all the time, he wants that permit, so he gets that one slipped to him. I think those permits have to be regulated. If a car's coming in for the weekend to work, and he's staying at the hotel, it has to go to the police station and get the fee, you know? Still get the permit from the hotel, but he has to go pay the police department, say, I'm here for three days, and they gotta regulate it somehow. You can't, you're opening a can of worms here, and it's been like that for a while. The town parking lot, we've been selling those parking spots, like they say, everybody wants to go away. They gotta suffer, they wanna go away for the day. They gotta cab it in while all the off-island vehicles take it up for four or five days. I think it was a regulation that they could only be there for a couple of days at a time.
86 hours.
Town parking lot, but...
Seven days.
It's a seven-day thing, so they can stay for the weekend. People wanna go off for the day, they can't use it. It, it's getting worse, like everybody said, around the neighborhoods, they're going away. They know where everything is, we gotta expand it. We're not here to take care of these companies, they have to pay their way too. They're doing the same thing on the Cape, they, they were rushing the areas in Hyannis, they were taking spots, they pushed them out of there. We gotta push them out towards wherever we can give parking and get our parking spots back, so... I think if it's gonna get back to a public hearing, we're gonna get this all written in the right path, so we're not giving everybody a loophole to get through. And like I say, it's doing great, if you go through town early in the morning, it's plenty of open areas, it used to be Eastern Street was parked, now they're down on Walt Street parking and stuff like that, so expand them around, and, you know, I'm sorry about the people, the commercial vehicles that leave their trucks overnight and get a ticket, you know? We gotta pay it somehow, and I don't know what the best way for that is to do either, but we'll go from there, thank you.
If you, if you have a question, you gotta have a solution, but I'll just come up here with a... Yes, ma'am?
Judy Colletts, I'm over in Harborview A. And the commercial trucks that are parking in front of my house overnight belong to companies whose employees leave the trucks every afternoon, 3:00, catch the 3:30 boat, and they're there overnight until the next morning at 7:00 or 8:00. I have them, box trucks sitting in front of my house for 15 hours at a time. And I, I call the police now only when there's a truck right in front of my house. I don't like to have to call all the time. There's trucks all over the neighborhood all the time. I have to show a proof of residency when I get my resident parking ticket, and I don't understand how some of these commercial vehicles that are business trucks are able to get around that. And we fought that last summer. I have a letter from Jerry Stiller that I had given in, and I think my neighbor, Mr. Kaplan, wrote also about the, I pay taxes for my waterfront property and I can't see the water with the box trucks. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it clear?
I think we got it, clear as mud.
So we'll look forward to speaking to you again. Thank you for all those that came up and made a comment.
How did you feel about the Two Fairgrounds paid parking idea?
Well, we, you're gonna come with a proposal, we haven't seen a proposal.
Oh, well, okay.
I'm fine with it.
Yeah, thank you.
If we give them a place here, and charge them one spot, then they'll have to go.
Yeah, I don't mind that.
It's like hunting cats.
Are we getting some pricing on the system?
Mm-hmm.
Great.
So that's, so you, aren't you coming back with a specific proposal on the park?
Well, I think we just wanted to hear if you supported the concept. And then, yes, we can come back with a specific proposal. Probably have to be put out to bid. But I think Transportation Planner has already gotten some information on pricing and what the potential fees might be. So we'll come back with...
I guess the only, the only, again, it's, everything's complex, but in our conversations about the ferry connector, parking, access to parking, the question is, would we be charging those folks to park there?
They'd have to say, I'm a connector, I'm not a connector. Boy, that's just another...
Yeah, I'm just saying, I just, you know.
It's just one more thing.
It's not, nothing's easy, so.
Do we have a ferry connector?
We're working on it.
Why not? They don't give us, we don't get free parking in Hyannis.
Yeah, I'm just...
I, I understand. I, I just...
Trying not to have...
So, Mr. Chairman, are we at the point of scheduling the public hearing or should we come back with some specifics and then schedule a public hearing? Because I guess we're...
Yeah, I think we'd like to see some specifics, and this is not...
Okay. It's not urgent.
Time sensitive.
Right.
Okay. All right.
Okay, the next item is the fiscal '18 budget review for the sewer enterprise fund. I think David's gonna take us through it with support from Brian if needed.
As you can see, we have changed our mission statement a little bit. I don't know if you guys have had a chance to read it or not, but it's, we're trying to bring everything into line. Not only the sewer permits and everything else, but with all the fats, oils, and grease problems that we're having and everything else downtown. So there's a lot of stuff going on as far as the sewer goes. We've got some goals. I don't know if you want me to go through everything or just...
Whatever you think you want us to understand and leave with.
All right. Well, some of the goals we're taking, we're still taking, to meet our state mandated discharge limits for treated effluent, which we're doing fine as kind with no problem there. We have, we're now a standalone independent department, so we're in the process of trying to create this professional sewer department operation and administration to effectively serve all the residents and the guests of the island. That's coming along slowly. The office is in place, we just don't have the staffing yet, so we're still working on all of that. The C Street pump station upgrade is coming up. We're, we'll be explaining that again a little bit tonight, as well as with the Shimo project and the Surfside wastewater project. And we're working very hard to maintain a lot of the stuff with the CWMP, so a lot of, a lot of activity out there going on. The, some of our priorities, as you see, we're trying to develop a fiscally attainable budget and prioritize all of our critical infrastructure additions, repairs, and replacements. Again, that, a lot of that's gonna come out of the CMOM program and a lot of the inspections that we got, stuff coming up. Again, new independent sewer enterprise department, new director. And we're trying to work on designs and program repairs for longstanding maintenance issues that we have, from sewer repairs, pump station repairs, some of our buildings, and et cetera like that, so.
David, just help me a little bit with a fiscally attainable budget. I'm not quite sure what that means.
Well, it's, we're trying to take and do everything as fiscally possible, prudent, I guess I should say, where that, whether that means we do some of the repairs ourselves instead of trying to bid it out all the time or whatever like that. Some of the sewer cleaning we can do. Eventually, we'll have the capability to do some of our own sewer inspections with cameras and stuff. So we're trying to bring in the equipment to do some of it ourselves so we don't have to keep going out. That's gonna take some training for some of our guys, and we have quite a staff out there that we're really trying to fine tune and it's going well. We have some...
So it sounds to me like what you're saying is within certain budget parameters, a revenue stream, you're trying to make sure you can be as effective as you can to accomplish all your mission?
Effective and efficiently as we can, yeah. We are changing a lot of different, for example, some of our pump station inspections, which would go back to that People GIS. It's gonna, instead of having to fill out paper every day, it's gonna go to an electronic format that the records will be being read back.
Over time, you hope to save a lot of money by being more...
Saving money, and then all of a sudden, stuff will pop up as, say, one of the pumps ran seven hours one night and it'll set up a flag, so we'll know there's an issue right then and there instead of at the end of the month.
I just have one question, but as you, you've been in this position for maybe a couple of months, and I know we've had some kind of sewer-related surprises over the last year before you were, you know...
Yes.
And so I really, you know, just, and there's, there's no right or wrong answer, but what are the, what's one or two things that keep you awake at night?
C Street pump station for one.
Okay.
Once that upgrade starts, I'll definitely sleep a little bit better. And some of the issues we're having with some of the, the older infrastructure around town. The Flora Street was one of the big ones. We were there every two days, rodding that line until we finally were able to fix it. We had an incident today on Orange Street where the contractors down there broke a sewer main. And myself and Chuck were down there for, I think, five hours this morning trying to get it fixed properly. And it just popped up all of a sudden this morning. So it's just stuff like that that catches off guard. And so, the, I don't know if you want to go into the exceptions now or...
So this is an opportunity for you to present your budget and, however you want to present.
The, I was prepared to go through the exceptions first, but we can kind of go through line by line if you...
No, 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 go ahead.
I'm not sure whether there was a...
That's on page...
On the exceptions.
And ours is page 87 of 160.
There we go. Yeah. The, this is the start, and again, brand-new department. We have a position for an administrative assistant coming up. Some of the additional overtime that you see there has to do with the stuff that keeps me up at night. Unfortunately, at 3:30, we can't just go home sometimes. We have to stay until it's over with. The other night for the storm that we had, I had three guys working all night, manning the plants and just roving around the stations just to make sure everything was going. We didn't have any incidents. We were on generator power the whole time at that, during that last storm. And that's, we did that, as soon as the weather got bad, we shut everything off and went to generators, so we didn't have to chase things at night. But we still had some branches down and incidents like that, so overtime has been a little bit.
Just understand, an exception is what, a reason for an increase in the budget from one year to the next?
Increase, yes. And this year, there are a few. We also have been funded for two, two new positions coming in July. Those will mostly be collections guys out on the street. I currently have three openings right now, empty, vacant positions that we just went through the whole process. We've been getting ready to take and call some people in, so we'll be bringing on two or three people here real soon. All those are funded positions already. We had a gentleman retire, we had a guy leave, and then we've had another promotion in-house, so. Some of the operational stuff, getting into the buildings. We do a lot of our own maintenance in-house with assistance from DPW facilities crew. If we have to replace a louver or shingles or something like that, we try to do some of that on our own. The maintenance guys don't come out to the plant. We do a lot of that on our own as well at both facilities, so that's where that increase comes. The maintenance and repairs for office equipment, again, we're trying to establish an office, so that's furniture printers and everything else that's coming in. The maintenance of sewers, again, is, there's a lot of different technologies out there now. I was, been in talks with a company that does foaming. They come in and they'll foam certain sections of sewer for root control. It goes in, there's some of it, there's different steps, instantaneous, will destroy the roots, make them erode away, and then they wash down the line. Something we've never tried here before, something I'm looking at possibly getting to come into some of the bad, some of the sections in town that we know that are pretty well inundated with roots, to see if that'll get us going, at least carry us over until some of the CMOM stuff comes up. Professional services has gone up.
Before you go off, before you go off there, what does that consist of? Is that, is that something you want going into the harbor? Is it okay?
It's all EPA, DEP-approved chemicals. It's, I was talking to the guy up in Boston when I was up there, and it's, it's quite an interesting process. It's safe for all of our biological treatment at the plants, and it's safe to the environment. And he went on and on, he has EPA sheets and all kinds of cut sheets on it, so it was, that was one of my biggest concerns. I didn't want to put something in the sewer that was gonna wipe out my plant. That was a big concern. So professional services has gone up, and the biggest part of that reason is we no longer have a town engineer. We do it as of now with Chuck on board and possibly a DPW director coming in, so I don't have any support as far as engineering goes. So I've been relying heavily on my OPMs and my engineering firms now. So that's a bit of an increase. Inventory and spare parts, that used to be a capital item that was on every year, and that's to take, and we're mandated by regulations to have so many spare parts on, on hand. And it was, discussions with administration and stuff, they said, well, if it's something you're doing every year, why not just bring it over to your budget so that it's gonna be there? And that's what that increase is. The water pollution abatement is something that's regulatory that Brian, if he had to, would explain, but that's something that goes on every year. It changes, fluctuates, goes up or down. And again, the professional services that you see there for the collections in Sconset, again, to assist me with a lot of the needs that I need for engineering services that I just don't have right now. But now that Chuck's on board, I'll be able to hopefully lean on him quite a bit. And the last one there was the upgrade to the wastewater lab. That's basically to take and bring us up to 100% compliance to get all of our SOPs rewritten. Regulations keep changing on us, so we have to have new regulations, new SOPs written every year, new forms, new, new processes, new training for the guys, so that's what that 30,000 is, to bring that up.
David, just before you leave this page, on the building is $12,500 a year. Is that enough to keep your buildings up to snuff? If you've got 12.5 going 2.5% every year and it stayed in that item, would that take care of those things?
It's gonna be initially probably a little more at first because we have to put a roof on one of our pump stations right now, and then hopefully it's gonna level out. That's our goal. Some of our stations and some of our buildings have, just haven't had anything over the years.
Well, that's sort of why I'm thinking about it. If you're starting a, you know, you're starting this, this, it should be line itemed and segregated so that you don't get in the situation.
And luckily, we can lean on facilities at the DPW a lot, which is, which has been helpful. They have, they have quite a crew there now where they've been helping us out.
How big is the roof on the pump station?
The one pump station over at South Valley is the one that's in really bad disrepair right now. We have an upgrade coming to that facility. We're hoping to use the funding that we get from...
What size is that building roughly?
20 by 28, roughly, I guess.
It's a cottage-sized building.
Yeah, it's a cottage. It looks like, you can't even tell it's a pump station. It looks like a house when you drive in there. Again, to trim and, so, and, you know...
10, but it'll cost us 50.
Yeah.
If you put it out to bid.
And luckily, the, the maintenance crew at the DPW has helped us a lot. They have done some of our routes, but...
If it was one of the smaller ones, I was thinking maybe we'd get the high school kids to do it.
Oh, they could do the bigger one too, I guess, right? You know?
Fieldwork.
All righty. The, the next one is some of the exceptions. These are a lot to do with the collection systems, et cetera. The pump station upgrade, what we do every year with that funding is we rotate, we rotate out new pumps. We take in a lot of the control panels, some of them are 20, 30 years old. We'll take and replace a control panel a year. This funding was critical for when we had the pump station failure over at Pine Valley when the piping let go on us. We were able to use this funding without having to go for any supplemental funds to rebuild that pump station. It was like $59,000. So that's, that money saved us on that. It's helped us out with the airport. We've purchased pumps for the airport. It helped us buy a new pump at C Street a few years back when one of ours went down, so that funding is in every year in the capital items, and it's, it sure has been a lifesaver. The force main assessment, that's something that's definitely keeps me up at night. I don't know if anyone had recently seen the incident, what took place up in Plymouth, where both of their force mains failed, and their force mains were 15 years old. The one force main that we have that's unlined is almost 50 years old. So this funding here, at one point in time, we were gonna go for assessment and just get studies on it, but we're not even gonna go with the assessment part. We're gonna go right into the planning to get that thing lined. It's, it's 50 years old, it needs to be done, and we're gonna step right into that next process.
David, just remind us, when was the other line lined?
1987.
Just to put things in perspective, that, that's not exactly brand-new either.
No, the, it's, that, that line was a 20-inch line, but now it has a 16-inch liner in it. That would be similar, what would be take place. And this is the force main that goes up over New Lane, north, all the way up through Chicken Hill, and then all the way out to the plant that way. That one is just about 50 years old, so. And that's, that's, after going to Plymouth, I actually went to Plymouth and visited that site after it happened because they might be doing some of our bypass pumping at C Street. And the pipe, the pipe was as thin as a piece of paper from the hydrogen sulfide gases. So that, we, right now, we constantly alternate our force mains to keep the, the fresh, the sewage fresh in each line so that we don't have that buildup of hydrogen sulfide gas. So that's something that when we get the new pump station online, it's gonna be automated. It'll automatically rotate those force mains, so everything will stay fresh in the lines. They won't sit there and just cook. The CMOM is coming out of the AOC that we have, that's, it just stepped us up a couple of years. This will be for its collections, management operations, and maintenance of the systems. This will be for inspections, some repairs, location of all manhole covers, location of where the laterals come through. It's, it's quite an extensive project. Generator repairs for the generator for Montemoy, which is 27 years old. Tanker truck, that's to replace the truck that was bought for the Sconset plant in 2003. We're gonna replace the chassis, we're gonna save the stainless steel tank and put a new pump on it. It's just coming up on almost 15 years old, so. And then we're gonna get into the Sconset system evaluation again. That system out there has had, never had anything done to it, and there's a lot of lines that go places that I'd rather not discuss, so. Flora Street manhole, that's to take and finish the, it's, I asked for $100,000, it's not gonna be anywhere near that, but it's just that when we finished that, replaced that whole line, the manhole itself was found to be getting to the point where it was 70 years old, so that'll be part of the Farmer Street replacement when we do that to put another brand-new manhole, and then Flora Street will no longer keep me awake at night. And Farmer Street's again, another 70, 80-year-old sewer main that's got some issues that we may have to maintain almost on a daily basis, so. And then the last one was the fiber lines to the plant, which will connect us into the town network. Right now, we work through a tunnel through Comcast, and that'll provide us with 100% fiber connectivity to this facility here. And on the way back, on the way by Sherburne Commons, we plan on leaving a drop for any potential of a future our island home in the area. So that's the exceptions.
I think that's, I think that's...
And I don't know if you guys want to go line by line on everything or if you have any overall questions?
No, I think, let's just take a, let's just take a pause. I think that's great, and I don't, I don't know, sometimes we get into a conversation about the sewer enterprise fund balance, and I don't know if, Brian, you want to speak to that or if there's any questions, any board member has of that?
Maybe just a general comment. It looked to me like your, and I guess this is the problem with the budgeting for a municipality in the state, that your '18 budget revenue is exactly the same as your '17. And I assume we feel with more users coming on, we're actually gonna have a higher revenue the following year than your budgeting. revenue the following year than your budgeting. Is that the case?
It is. And when, before we actually ask FinCom to vote the budget, when they do that, these revenue numbers might change a little bit because I'm getting updated monthly from the water company on what has been billed versus what's been collected. So that revenue number could change. When this has started, it's done very conservatively to make sure that we don't get too far ahead of ourselves and have to make significant changes or use even more retained earnings, so.
So it sort of looks like what's happening is we end up with free cash going to retained earnings, kind of like not every year, but it may start to get consistent. And, and you bring that back in the next year-
Right.
-to plug the budget difference.
Or use it to fund some of the capital or other items like that. Yes, that's correct.
And how does that stand with our free cash policy, Brian?
The number right now is 4.7 million, which is in line with, between, I think the policy says between, up to between 5 and 10%. So we're within that range, within the policy, using the retained earnings as the equivalent of free cash. So we're within that policy. And one of the things that it does do is, everybody remembers especially with this, if we have a special town meeting and free cash and retainers has been certified and the tax rate has been set, this is a funding source if there's an emergency or something that comes up as a way to use it as well. So it does become kind of a stopgap once the tax rate has been certified as well, so.
It smoothes the sewer rates.
And it can smooth, it does smooth it out a little bit.
And your expense increase for this year is sort of comforted by the decrease in the debt service number?
Well, there was a small decrease in the, yeah, there is a little bit of a decrease, so. But some of the increases and the expenditures are necessary to move the operation in the direction.
That's great. I understand. I'm just pointing that out to people. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions of David? Thank you very much.
One of the last sheets, I don't know if you, is the org chat. I just didn't know if we wanted to see what we actually have going on out there. When I did this org chat, it was basically a snapshot and I inadvertently missed, missed the two funded collection spots, so there'd be two more under the collection systems. But that's how it sits right now. The green is my vacancies that I have currently. And we've been authorized to hire, so we're going to be moving that forward here coming up. And that just kind of gives you an idea of what we've got going on out there. A lot of different departments within the department, so.
Thank you. I guess you're, you're here for C Street-
Yeah, I'll stay here. I just introduce the engineers and stuff.
Okay.
The, this is a breakdown of the C Street pump station on our bids that we got. I'm going to introduce Frank Ayotte from Hazen and Sawyer to go over where we came in. And Frank can give you the detail.
Good evening. Hazen and Sawyer is the project design engineer for the C Street wastewater pump station. As you all know, that pump station handles about 70% of the town's wastewater. So it's pretty critical infrastructure. On January 27th, we actually had the general bidder bid results for the station. We received two bids, the low bid being Robert B. Our Company coming in at 4.6 million. Essentially, that was the contract price without the bid alternatives. And if you compare that to the engineer's estimate, we were then with $16,000 essentially, which was a very, very close bid. Total contract price with all bid alts, a difference of a few hundred thousand there, about 3.5% low from the engineer's estimate. So all in all, pretty good prices. After discussion with David and also Brian, the recommendation was to move forward with all the bid alternates. The next slide, let's see how that compares with what was appropriated by the town. So the town appropriation was $6 million. The total contract price from the previous slides was 5.025879. That included all three bid alternates. The three bid alternates I have on a following slide included a wet well epoxy coating. The second bid alt was a flood control wall, and the third bid alternate was a security system. Engineering OPM services, 1.2 million dollars essentially. That makes up the other part of the budget. If you include a 5% construction contingency, that'd be about 252,000. So amount over the $6 million appropriation would be about 560,000. I think it's important to note too that in terms of the engineering OPM services, OPM services totaled about 106,000. That wasn't originally part of the appropriation, that those services were originally being done by the town. And also in terms of the construction contingency, that's 5%, but that, you know, that may not be used. That's for any potential change orders or unforeseen conditions as we go through the construction of the station. The 560,000 would be obtained, and talking with Brian, through retained earnings going through town meeting on April 1st. I don't know if you want to go through the bid alternates, but I have those on that slide here.
I have six meetings left. If my head doesn't explode before I'm done, that would be a miracle. I remember sitting here specifically with this individual, with this group of individuals telling me that we have a very, very generous appropriation from the town, and there should be no problem with the numbers. We're 560,000 under. Does anyone have any faith in all that the 41 million we have for Shimo Monomoy is even going to come close, close to what it's going to be? I don't. I'm looking at the next one and we're, how much over are we on the next one?
One point to note, we could award the project on the straight without the bid alternates, and we would be under the $6 million appropriation. And that would leave us about 2.5% contingency for change orders.
But I don't think that was the expectation. I mean, I think we had the expectation that with doing the full job was within the appropriation.
That's correct, yes. That's correct.
And this is very important. If any, if we only do one project all year, it's this one that has to be done. As David said, 70% of the sewer goes through it. If that thing fails, we are up a creek that I don't want to be up. What is the bid alt three at? $80,000 for a security, is this camera?
It actually, the total amount for bid alt three was about $20,000.
All right, 20,000.
Yeah. Bid alt one wound up to be about $200,000, bid alt two about 198 or so.
Okay. So that was 20,000.
Right.
Is that just cameras inside the building?
Cameras, intrusion alarms, things like that, yes.
Man-down alarms and stuff, yeah.
Okay, so that's not-
And that has direct communication to the C Street station, I mean, surfside station.
You did come back to us and discuss the bid alternates, and I think we were supportive of them.
Right.
Okay.
Well, just to point out, I suppose, that the retained earnings at July 1, 16 were $4,700,000. So there's a lot of retained earnings in the fund right now, so.
And that's where it's coming from?
Yeah, it's a good use, so.
And out of the 560,000, 106 wasn't anticipated because the town was doing OPM services that are now being done by Western and Sampson. And the 5% contingency is just that, a contingency. We don't look for something that high in a change order pool, but we don't go into a project with no money for unforeseen changes. So if you add those two, it's 300 and some odd thousand out of the 560.
Take the money and run. Come on.
Anything else? No?
Not on that one.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Flora Street?
Frank, you want to do this one too? This is the, an update so that Frank can go over with you on the administrative order of compliance for the Flora Street incidents that we had.
Sure. So as part of the ACO, these are the effective milestones that were part of the order. As David might have mentioned earlier, he replaced the pipe on Flora Street with the exception of the manhole, which is going to be scheduled in the upcoming fiscal year. The self-assessment checklist spill prevention control countermeasure was due December 26, 2016, three months after the order was issued in October. That was submitted to EPA. The CMOM, now, what happens here is we wait for responses from MAST DEP and EPA. Once we get those responses, what ends up happening is the implementation annual report and the corrective action plan are done thereafter. So those are the two next steps. The annual report, March 31, 2017. The corrective action plan, that's essentially a gap analysis from the checklist that shows, okay, you might be missing these items, therefore, this is the plan moving forward to correct that. That's due April 24, 2017. And then next milestone is the program manual due at the end of the year, December 26. So item one has been complete, and item two is under contract with Woodard and Curran to be done March 31. And then item three, April 24.
And we're on track for those to be done by then?
That's correct.
Do we really believe once all this is done that it will actually help us perform better? Or is there a certain amount of federally mandated make-work here?
No. In terms of a real CMOM program, as it's followed through, do a complete inventory of the assets, it's a condition assessment, and then it's looking at the condition of those pipes and moving forward with rehab and rehabilitation contracts. And it's a living thing. It happens every some odd year. Some people are able to do their systems within a five-to-10-year period. Then they start over again by reassessing, because it's 10 years later, what the condition of their pipes was. It is a great practice. It keeps the collection system up to snuff. It's not make-work. It's a good program.
Okay. So I was sort of struck by the comments about Flora Street. I think they were just being honest with us that they'd been rototurin Flora Street for six months, five years, I don't know how long. But I would hope we would find those things. And there might be 10 other Flora Streets out there for all we know.
Yeah.
I think we want to get on and get these things corrected, so.
That's, that's correct. So David presented a budget of about 1.7 million for CMOM coming up in the next fiscal year. That includes CCTV of pipes, not all of them, but it includes manhole inspections, getting that infrastructure inspected. It includes reviewing what the condition of those infrastructure results are, and then action into rehab and rehabilitation, some money for repairs and that, so.
I'm just thinking about it. Because I know we did, and this is going back 15 or 16 years, we know we, we camered a ton of pipes back then.
2005.
Yeah. And so how many of those were, that we identified as faulty, were corrected?
A lot of that came out with the Phase 2B downtown. That was a lot of that whole inner area, Fair Street. So a good portion of that was done. They stopped at the top of Fair. And there was a good portion from Fair towards Five Corners that the pipes, they couldn't get the camera in because it was, there were so many routes. So that would be the next area. Those areas had been identified before as mini-systems.
So we haven't identified areas and not fixed them. Everything we identified has been fixed. That's what I'm trying to get to.
Most, everything that they had done was fixed with the Phase 2B. There was supposed to be a Phase 2C or 3 that went towards Derry Moor, Westchester. We just haven't got there yet, so. But it's all been identified.
Because what I, because the reason I'm asking is if we aren't able to get, we want to phase this in a way that we shoot it and fix it. Rather than we shoot it and it's 15 years later, we have to shoot it again.
No, it's, I can't get any sleep that way.
Okay, good. Making sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. I think the next thing we have is the, just an update to the outreach plans for Shimo and the plus parcels and everything else. And then after that, we have one more. I'll introduce, I have Kent Nichols here and Dave Burke, both from Western and Sampson, who'll do the, explain the outreach that we're going to go forward with.
Evening, folks. Kent Nichols with Western and Sampson. We're the consultants for the Shimo project. We've talked to you about a few of the things in the past ongoing with the Shimo design project. The project continues to have a design moving forward. Our hope is to get into construction later this year. We've been in discussions with David and Libby and some of the other town staff about how best to get this project up and running in the public eye so that everyone knows enough information and there's no surprises as we go forward with the project. And a big part of that is an effective public outreach project. We want to actually start with an approach that will use a number of different methods to get information out to the public and give the public an opportunity to ask questions about the projects. Obviously, we want to get some written information out, which is going to start relatively soon. We want to have a bunch of meetings. We want to then have some interactive opportunities where people can get information at their own pace, including the ability to utilize online resources, website and other things. We would like to start the outreach process pretty quickly. Our goal is to actually get a defined number of very specific messages, kind of bite-sized pieces out into the hands of the folks that are going to be served and other folks who will be impacted by the project. And our goal is to start that as soon as next week with a project overview, kind of a general overview. And we intend to try to get these messages both posted at the town site and into the hands of the paper so we can actually have people seeing what this information is firsthand. Bite-sized, meaning we're going to have an ad-type of presentation in the paper, but also have something that people can get at a glance, kind of a one-pager, and limit the amount of information therefore to the point where I think, we hope as many people will read it as possible and not throw it aside because it's book-length. The initial approach would be to get some big overview issues out, and that's in the works right now. What's the project in general? The who, what, when, and where, and how? And start to answer some of those questions. The second item that we talked about is talking about that difference between gravity and low pressure, which we've spoken a little bit about with you folks in the past here in this meeting. The third one is going to be one that's near and dear to a lot of folks' hearts, which is cost considerations. Where do the costs look for the project? And then on the heels of that, we're going to talk about impacts, construction impacts, and how those are going to be mitigated through construction, how we're going to manage that process, followed by what's going to happen for on-lot connections, another item we've talked about before, but what people need to expect to deal with and what people should anticipate being able to have for assistance when they go about the process of actually physically connecting to the system. And then we're going to roll out some kind of outlines of the further outreach process that we're going to do, and more information and how to connect people with our ongoing process of meetings. Our hope is to have a broad public meeting with a detailed PowerPoint presentation coming up in the middle of March. And we've put some tentative dates on this outline here right now, March 14 is the tentative date. I don't think, Erica, we changed that. I think that's still holding right, as of right now. The March 14 date, that's still holding, right? So. And we're looking to refine these dates a little bit as we go forward into the next week or so. But I think we're in pretty good shape with this schedule showing as we start getting into some meetings with folks in March, we're going to target some groups. We're going to move into kind of later in the spring, maybe April into May, once we're into May with some of the neighborhood groups, and then actually jump into the summer when we get some of the areas, like the Shimo area specifically. And we think that that's a good approach to try to involve enough different venues where people will have an op, will have had an opportunity to come in and actually get their questions answered. And obviously, the project will have proceeded greatly by then. In addition, once we have a contractor onboard and we have an actual construction schedule, which we expect to have by early summer, we'd like to actually schedule a meeting back here with you folks where we'll have the construction contractor available as well, which I think is an appropriate step. And then we'll have a series of other opportunities for people to ask questions as we get up to really where we're going to be to start the construction of the project, which again is right now focused on putting shovel and ground sometime mid-September of this year, with the hopes that we can get the project completed in that one-off season as we see fit. So our initial request is just to kind of brief you on what our approach is going to be, and to see if there's any other areas where the Board of Selectmen would like to see us reach out to folks, if there's any other suggestions you would have, and also to get your interest level in how much involvement the Selectmen would like to have in participating in the process or otherwise guiding us on the outreach, so.
Any comments, reaction, interest in more or less participation?
Question.
Yes, Bobby?
So when are you thinking you're going to go to bid?
So our goal is to go to bid late spring, which is probably April.
And start construction in the fall?
With opening bids by hopefully sometime in May, but again, tentative.
Can this job be done? Can we do Shimo Monomoy and not do the plus pieces if we come up short on the appropriation? Because I don't have a lot of faith in the number, to be honest.
So maybe I'm unusual, but I will tell you, we've spent a lot of time looking at the budget for the Shimo and plus area project, and your appropriation is very generous for that one. I recognize that that doesn't sound very convincing on the heels of where you've been, but I will say that I have not said that about the-
I hope you're right. I really do. I'm just trying to come up with a plan B. Because I'm very concerned that if we have to wait and go back to town meeting the following spring.
We will have a buildable project under Shimo and Monomoy that we'll be able to proceed.
And your head will not explode, Bobby. They're promising five more meetings. I have not had an appropriation yet that came in.
Oh, I know.
You know, I mean, maybe this last one, if you really want to split hairs, was there, but look at the next one, you know. And this one, these, we were told, aren't like buildings. They're more, it's apples-for-apples kind of deal. So I get nervous when, you know, it's a big deal.
So the one thing I would caution, and I agree with you, it makes me really nervous too, but the one thing I would caution you to understand the difference of is, the scope right now for the Shimo and Monomoy project is relatively fixed, with the exception of the things we've been changing, like the easements. We talked about tonight, there's an amendment for us to do easements, and we come up with some little need to do some archaeological survey, which we didn't anticipate. Not a huge cost, those are small costs. But in general, the scope doesn't change. We're not going to new streets, we're not putting sewers twice as deep in the ground. The scope has been very flexible for the two vertical projects you've been dealing with. The C Street project that you just heard about, that scope flexed a lot from when that budget was set to when that job was finished and put out to bid. And when those scopes for vertical projects flex, it does have a tendency to reflect in the cost of those projects. You're going to hear, right after I'm done, from Dave Burke on the Surfside Treatment Plant project. That scope flexed even more. And when, again, when those scopes change, the amount of work you're going to do absolutely governs the amount of money that you need to have in your budget. And do you not think that that's a reasonable thing to take those two experiences and then reflect that onto the Shimo and PLUS area?
So let me ask you, I get that. So, but does the Surfside treatment improvements have to happen before Shimo, Monomoy and PLUS come online?
No.
So why are we doing them? For benefit?
You need the improvements.
But we don't need them for this?
You need them in general.
We'll find out in a minute.
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to add a little bit to what Kent was saying. I don't know that you covered this, about the grinder pumps and coming to the board.
Right.
At a later time. We've done, had quite a bit of discussion about going back to a board discussion of several months ago about the low-pressure lines and the grinder pumps and the town purchasing them, or at least requiring certain models. And I think we're going to have a recommendation for you at some point.
It was two to three weeks from now, I think, we said, we were going to be back, right? Maybe the meeting on the 8th or something.
I forget.
Yeah.
We want to make sure we get the right ones.
Right.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Great.
If you have everybody buying similar model.
Yep.
Yeah.
Right.
So maybe we buy them a bulk and then just sell them at cost. We can pass the savings on to the end.
So we have those exact type of recommendations we've been working on with the staff for you. And I think we penciled in the March 8th meeting, I think is what we had.
We might have penciled in different meetings.
Yeah, but we'll see. I mean, again, those can flex a little bit. The main, the endpoint of this is exactly, and thank you from the town manager for bringing me back to that point. The endpoint of this is, we are trying to find as many ways as we can to update people, because one thing that's unfortunate with big construction projects is, no matter how much attention you pay, sometimes you miss something that's going to happen in your neighborhood. So we want to use as many avenues as we can to get information out. One of those avenues is using your meeting here, which we appreciate how long your agenda is and how many other things you have to deal with. But I do think that the Selectmen's meetings are a good opportunity, because you have a good viewership on the television as well.
Great.
So we do appreciate the Selectmen's cooperation in helping to get that information out for the project and at least get people interested in asking questions.
Nice job. All right, thank you. Next item is Selectmen Reports and Comment. And the first item is Action on Surfside Wastewater Treatment Facility Upgrades Rebid.
I'm just going to touch one thing on the grinder pump quickly. I have to live here, so I know people have to work on their pumps and everything else like that. So we're vetting all the vendors under a microscope, and that's taking place over the next few weeks. They're going to be guaranteed, they're going to have to guarantee service people on the island, they're going to have to guarantee us parts on the island and everything like that. So that's all going to be part of this, as we come forward with the next presentation. What I'm going to do now is introduce Dave Burke. He's going to go over the Surfside Upgrade Project, where we stand, and what that project's looking like.
Thanks, Dave. Good evening. I guess I'll, before I get into things, I'd like to pick up on a point that just got brought up about the improvements at Surfside relative to how it's being timed with Shimo and the PLUS. There's several components involved in the improvements at the Surfside Wastewater Treatment Facility. Majority of those improvements have to do with reliability. David's plant is in a very unfavorable environment out on the ocean front, so there's a lot of issues that have to do with reliability and fixing things that are broken, fixing, you know, pipes that are corroded. And so that's just one aspect of the work that's being done there, in addition to the capacity issues, which addresses the new needs areas. So I just thought I'd jump in on that, because it was current. What I'd like to do is, in this presentation, is bring the board up to date. The bids were open back in November. Since that time, we've been working very closely with the design engineer, Woodard and Curran, with David, with Libby. Several meetings to discuss what the options are going forward. So in that vein, what I'd like to do is present to the board where we were at the time of the bid, how things fell out with the general bids, and what the best option is, we believe, for the town to go forward to get best value now, as well as have some options and some flexibility for some improvements down the road that David so sorely needs at the plant. So, starting with the first couple of slides will be the snapshots on where we stood at the time that we opened bids back in November. We had the bid, the project was packaged with a base bid and four alternates. And again, I draw your attention, and I don't necessarily read through all of this, but I'll draw your attention to the three elements under the base bid. And those are the plant capacity improvements, and that's what I alluded to in terms of what needs to be done at the plant to take on the needs areas that were identified in the CWMP update from October 2014. So looking at those needs areas, the report determined that the plant needed to be upgraded from 3.5 to 4 MGD. So in that component of the work, there are elements within the plant that need to be upgraded to address that additional capacity. In addition to that, we're relying, what they termed as reliability improvements, and that's replacing equipment that has met its useful life. The last upgrade was back in 2009, and there's components, and I'm sure David will concur or could embellish upon, that they've met their useful life in advance of the time that was anticipated, only because of the corrosive atmosphere. So some of the elements that were included, or are included in the scope of work for the current project are to try to protect some of those components of the plant and hopefully get a full useful life out of these improvements. The important aspect about
Can you clarify something for me?
Sure.
The corrosive atmosphere that we're talking about, is this salt and
Salt.
Or is it from the value engineering that we did the last time around, and we didn't do the stuff that we probably should have done, and it expedited the fatigue on these things?
Some of the issues had to do with a lot of the flooding downtown, the saltwater intrusion that we were getting. The valves that were installed and a lot of the piping that was installed met specs. I don't think they anticipated as much saltwater as we were getting. At some points in time over the last, we've had over 2 million gallons a day of saltwater coming out of C Street. And that salt has frozen 30 of our valves that are out there in place. We can't move them. The upgrade
Do we know where the saltwater's coming from, David?
A lot of it's coming from still on that, once that whole area floods. We had water up to the door at the C Street last winter. It's getting down in through some of the manholes still. A lot of the manholes that were installed were supposed to be watertight, had double covers in them. As we go around now doing inspections, we've noticed a lot of those inner covers have been taken out, whether by DPW staff in the past, or contractors or whatever. We've also had a lot of recent connections in a lot of those areas that had watertight mains, that have now had connections put into them. So a good portion of the salt is coming, a lot of it's coming through the manholes in the areas.
So the connections into the main aren't tight?
Some of them, they're inspected now. A lot of the new connections are done, and they are completely 100% watertight. But, believe it or not, the stuff that happens on weekends that we don't see, that's covered back up by the, come Monday, we'll come down the road and we'll find a road cut. It's happening. The guys
So, you know, at some point, you've got to take one of those and find out exactly what happened and make an issue of it.
Well, that's what we're doing now. It's, we're bringing on more collection staff. I'm going to have more people out there watching.
But David, all I'm saying is, it doesn't help us, or at least, so I'll speak for myself, to hear about that type of a problem, because it sounds like it's been going on for years. And to think we can't stop it is just, I'd say, unacceptable.
It's been going on for years, there's no doubt about it.
So we're paying for it here.
We are paying for it, and we're paying for it daily at C Street, from the flows that come from C Street during the floods. And I'm talking when the whole downtown area is flooded, Broad Street and everything.
I know, but I'm just talking about the joint
It does. It happens a lot, and it's happening more and more frequently. And that's really affecting us at the plant. The saltwater intrusion, which, whether it was never anticipated or it's gotten worse, or people have gone in and removed these second covers, which we're finding quite often. I have a guy out there now, that's pretty much all he's doing, is popping manhole covers. And if it doesn't have the second watertight cover, he's finding them, or we're getting new ones and putting them back in.
Yeah. I don't know a lot about sewers, but that seems like a pretty egregious.
It is.
I'm just sort of saying, holy
I'm just curious.
Private people are making connections and letting saltwater into our system, and the taxpayers helping to pay for it.
I can see the manhole cover thing. That I can totally get. I can't believe that there's that many weekend cuts in the road, David.
I'm not saying there's a lot, but there are a few.
I can't sneeze in this town without six permits and seven inspections. So, don't, I mean, maybe once in a blue moon, somebody cuts a little section of a road and sticks a pipe in the ground, but
Well, Orange Street was done today without any permits.
Orange Street where? At the, where they're doing the bike path?
That was done without any permits. And we just, we got called in there today, Chuck and I did.
But somebody has a permit to open that road.
No, there was no permits.
Okay, but that's not a good example. That's a state project. It's not, it's
Is it more likely people are putting sump pumps and things back into their
You get a lot of sump pumps are being returned back in. We're getting a lot of flows.
Plumbers will come in and they'll run a sump pump out of the basement right into the sewer line. I mean, that
That's happening a lot.
That's just as bad.
And that, well, that's when the smoke, we did smoke testing, again, 15 years ago, 18 years ago.
And we're reviewing a lot of that stuff.
It was all the way up Orange Street.
Yeah. It's all come, it's all back in now.
I bet it's, my guess is a lot of that's all back in. So.
Well, it takes constant monitoring and oversight, and we need more staff to do it, which is why we're sticking to adding.
Yeah, but that's how it ends up being 2 million gallons. Would you say half of that is faulty, half of that is? A lot of water can flow through a manhole in a short amount of time.
Within an hour, we get hit at C Street with a tremendous amount of flow, with a lot of II. And it's, there's still some areas on the outskirts that haven't been repaired yet, that are on the list, so.
Yeah. Well, thanks for being honest with us, but I think you hear from everyone here that it's something that's got to be fixed.
Yes.
All right.
And just to close out this slide, the bid alternates that were added, and one of the things that we highly advocated for was, in the hope of trying to be able to have the town be able to award some aspect of the project. And it wasn't until late in the final design period that the Headworks building was added, which is the most cost-significant item of all of them. And I'll go to the next slide, is the as-bid total project cost estimate. You'll see at the bottom of that, that totals up to the local appropriation. So this was the breakdown coming into the bids. That was the basis for the different elements of the costs. And you'll see that the base bid price at 5.25 million, and then the subsequent bid alternates, the Headworks building, and et cetera.
What was the original appropriation?
8.8.
That's what we appropriated?
Correct.
And where are we at now, totally?
Well, with the low bid.
Yeah.
Well, the low bid came in, I'll follow, in fact, that's the handout, Bob. The
Oh, this is it here?
Exactly. There were three bids that came in on November 17. So when I refer to, going forward, referring to some of the comparison costs, I'm looking at Robert B. Hours. They were the apparent low, coming in at about 9.1 million.
So that compares to the 8.8?
Sure.
So we're 300,000 over, without the contingency? Is that what you're saying?
No, we're much more than, much more than that, Bob.
I think that's without the alternates.
Yeah. I mean, again
This is base bid plus alternate, 1, 2, 3, 4.
Plus alternate is 9 million 90.
For 9.1 million.
9 million 90.
So.
The apples-to-apples, Bob, is the 9.9 million 90,000 that you see at the bottom of Robert B. Hour. Compare that with the 6.5 million. Because keep in mind, the bid prices on the bid tab sheet don't include your contingency.
You don't have the engineering costs in or the 5%, 6%?
Correct.
Oh.
So where you see what the estimate, oh, thank you, Erica.
Sorry.
Okay.
So if you guys just eat your engineering fee and we stay on budget, we'll be good, right?
It's an appetite I can't speak for, because it's not ours.
So, it's too much to take out of retained earnings, so.
Well, where we stand now, Bobby, is because
You've got a couple of proposals.
Well, what happened is, at that stage, the town has two options. Under the mass bidding laws, they'll, you either go back and value engineer and pull things out and maintain your existing, and target your existing appropriation, or you seek new revenue. Now, the special case here in Surfside is that it presented an opportunity to revisit what I'll refer to as some value issues, in terms of some of the changes. Kent alluded that there were changes in the scope. It was a very dynamic scope from the time that the CWMP was prepared back in the end of 2014. And a little bit of history, and, you know, David can jump in if he wants, but in the summer of 2015, he had some serious sludge de-watering issues. There were problems at the plant, de-watering the sludge, trying to maintain the plant operation. And what that did is it turned a lot of the focus during the design, which was only just starting. Woodard and Curran's agreement was executed in August of 2015, in anticipation of making the SRF application, because this is a mass DEP assisted project that October. So all of this was dynamically happening right at the start of the design contract, which, again, was based on a scope from the previous year's, the CWMP update. Now, with that, the whole evaluation of how best to address David's problem with sludge processing became the focus of the design. And that's pretty much where we stepped into the picture almost exactly a year ago, is the OPM. Woodard and Curran, working with David and Kara, were doing an evaluation of all the different types of options. What would be the best options that would suit application at Surfside? The determination was made through the town, or through the decision from the town, to go with gravity thickeners. What that did is basically repurpose, I think it was half of your sludge holding tanks, correct, David? Into these gravity thickeners for helping to settle out solids and improve David's operations as far as sludge processing. Unfortunately, looking back in the rearview mirror now, that's a heavy cost item that, again, looking at it now, is probably questionable in terms of its value. And what the opportunity we had with the bids coming in was to revisit that determination.
So we're going to rebid it without them, a different technology?
Correct. Well, what we're going to do is, because since then
If you could just go over your recommendations.
Sure.
Just specifically.
Yeah, let me, did I lose control?
Sorry.
Thanks. So the bid tabulation is what you have. Again, just a quick run-through. This is more or less just kind of rehashing what we've talked about. The low bid, the 9.1 million is 40% over the engineer's estimate of 6.5. The base bid proposal for the low bid, so in other words, even if we stripped out all the bid alternates, once you add the contingencies, is still nearly a million dollars over-the-line item for the total construction budget within the 8.8 million. So in other words, we're in a position with, even with our bid alternates, the town didn't have an opportunity to award the contract as it was submitted by Robert B. Hour. So again, at that point, under the mass general laws, the town has two options. You either reject all bids, go back to the drawing board, cut things out, repackage and rebid, or you seek additional funds. Because of the issue I get into now, just a little while ago, about the gravity thickeners and David's, you know, David's opinion and to some extent, with our support about revisiting what David's best value was for going forward with dealing with his sludge processing issue, was to yank that out and look at other options that might work just as well for David. Because, again, and I don't think Because again, and I don't think in 2016 you had the same, those same issues that were prevalent, again, that drove the changes in the, in the design back in 2015 weren't apparent. So on the basis of those evaluations, we decide, with the town, the decision was made to reject the three bids that came in.
Right. So I think, but back, I'm trying to get to your, I think you've mentioned that before, but are you, proposed approach, phase one, is that what your recommendation is?
Correct.
Okay. Does everybody understand that? Have any questions about it?
So really, I'm getting you up to the point where we are as of the bids coming in, the action that was taken. And now, over the, the discussions that have been held over the last couple of months with the design team, with the town, have come up with a two-phase approach on getting David to, getting the town to be able to have the best, take advantage of the best value of what they have right now. You guys own a set of documents. The documents went out, the price came in high. We can strip out at no change in the design budget, can strip out elements of work and repackage and rebid the job. And that's what the phase one component is. It'll take out the gravity thickeners, it'll take out some RAS improvements, the return activated sludge improvements, and it will also pull out bid alternates 2, 3, and 4. What that maintains is the headworks building, which is an important component in protecting some of the corrosive elements or the, the items up of the, the headwork structures that were exposed to the, the salt air.
It's essentially covering things that probably should have been covered in the first place.
Well, David's had a lot of issues. I mean, I know you've got your, your epoxy lining up there, and there's...
We've since, we've lined the whole headworks with an epoxy coating, and we've installed screeners. And this is to take and get in and protect the $400,000 worth of screeners we have up there, and the sampling equipment and everything else. So the headworks was a very big key, and that's where a lot of our odor comes from. And we're gonna be putting odor control in there to try to eliminate any of the odor complaints that we have. So the headworks was a very key part of this whole plan.
So let's just consider the proposed approach, phase one. Any questions from board members?
I certainly don't have the technical expertise to...
I'm just trying to...
Decide these are higher priority than the next one.
Right, I think we rely, we rely on that.
By doing this, are we redoing, do we have to redo any of the work when we go out to bid and do it the second time? I guess, is there any advantage of doing it all at once?
Well, the, what you have now, the, the bid documents include components or include work that we're revisiting and looking at pulling out. So in terms of, we had that option of looking. In fact, there were some preliminary discussions in town, and it's, you know, on the next slide is talking about the potential for utilizing some money under the shimmo budget. Now, I don't want to step on, on Kent's prediction, but the, the, the notion that there's a generous appropriation under shimmo is well-founded. And there's an opportunity to use, based on the interpretation of the appropriation for that, to use some of that money at Surfside as a downstream facility. We think the...
I, I don't think that's, I think my question, if you put something off a year or two years, you're gonna, it's, you're gonna have, it's gonna have cost of living increases. You're gonna, and are you, and you're gonna, you're gonna bring guys down, and they're gonna do the work once, and then go home, and they're gonna have to come back down. So we're gonna have all those travel expenses back and forth again. You know, how much are we gaining really? I guess I'm saying, is there any benefit of trying to do it all at once?
Yeah. What if we just went back and got $3 million from town meeting?
What I think...
I'm not saying we would, but what's the difference? Yeah, what's the difference if we...
It would be mostly, it would be an appropriation issue, I guess, more than anything.
But what I heard you say is that you wouldn't do these things today or in the future if you had all the money in the world.
The, the RAS improvements, partially, I believe, and, but bid alternate numbers two, bid alternate number four goes out with the gravity thickeners. So that's...
So you deli, alright.
That, that's, that goes out with the, the removal of the gravity thickeners. Bid alternates two and three would be items that we could keep in, but, or pursue later on.
But I heard you say that you've made the decision internally not to do that. And it wasn't related to...
No, the goal here...
Cost, it was related to whether those things should be done.
No, it's, it's in terms of packaging a job now to get something out as quickly as possible and utilize the documents that the town has now.
That's not real clear to me.
I know, and I'm gonna try to clarify it. We're taking out the gravity thickeners.
Correct.
What are we putting in there replaced to do the same thing? Or are we just eliminating that whole part of the process now, and he's still gonna have the problem?
It's, it's part of the second phase.
So, yeah, so we're pushing it...
So for phase one, you're pushing it away, correct?
So we're pushing it back.
But you're not, but you're not pushing...
Doing the same damn thing we did last time. We're value engineering something out that's gonna cost us more money later on.
But we're not looking at that option, Bob.
But what do we, but he's still got the problem.
So I, what I'm hearing is not a lot of clarity about what you're recommending, and a lot of questions from us?
I, just my, you know, I sense a lot of times the town, just in general, does this because it's concerned about going back and asking for more money. And that, that's not your problem, that's our problem and the staff's problem. And, and it's like, if we're gonna do it, we ought to do it right. That, that's my reaction. And so I don't want, this goes back to Matt's question, which I don't think was answered. It's sort of Bobby's getting at the same thing, which I don't think was answered.
I think it's a question for Libby. How much, how much of this project, have you, have you reduced the scope of the project? And are there, you've eliminated things that you think we should do because we don't have enough money?
I would defer to David on that. I'm not the engineer, and we have had an extensive discussion about this. And I think the, the bottom line answer probably is, yes, if we did the whole thing at once, we, it would be less costly than facing it. But the question was whether or not there were funds available.
I didn't want to go there, and I didn't want to do this, but the project as bid was decided by Kara against all of our operators' suggestions.
It was a bad project.
It was a bad project, it was a bad project from the beginning.
Designed by Woodard and Curran.
Right.
Which I just have a sense of...
And I came in and we, when we had the opportunity to take and reject all the bids and then bid the project that the town should get...
Yep.
Is the way I took it, and that's why we went that way.
So what we're bidding right now, David, in phase one, is what you think we should get?
Phase one, we need. There's no doubt about that part of it, we need. Now, when we get to phase two for the dewatering, we're gonna look at different technology. We're gonna look at centrifuges, and I mean, it's gonna be a lot cheaper.
You're not even at a point yourself where you're ready to recommend that.
That clarifies a lot for me.
That's what you said last time, that there was some new technology.
It's a bad project.
That's what I wanted to hear.
I mean, I gotta live here, so it's, it's gonna, we're gonna get the project that the town needs. It's just, I didn't want to go there, but I had to.
So, I think we could have, you know, we could have...
We want to make sure that we're not spending 41 million on new sewers and not spending three to do the proper...
Alright, so...
So what, so you'd like us to do option one? And you need a vote, Libby, from us on that?
I think we'd be comfortable with a vote.
I'd make a motion to rebid this project as proposed in phase one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye. Opposed, no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. The next item is review of Article 76 of the 2017 Annual Town Meeting District Improvement Financing. I've just got a couple of comments before we start. In looking at the calendar today with Libby, we are, as probably you all could have predicted, getting into some time crunches. The FINCOM motions will be coming out on September, I'm sorry, on March 7. We meet on March 8, and they, that's the night they need to be approved. Right, Libby?
Your comments for printing in the warrant.
Comments, right.
Correct.
So any comments we have additionally to the FINCOM or...
Right. So if we're gonna make a comment about...
So when are we gonna get their comments, then?
We're gonna get them. Well, that's, that's, I'll also address that. So beginning next week, I have a list which is gonna go out to you, which is the, is the current schedule of all FINCOM motions that they've made to date. And going, starting next week, we're just gonna go, because we only have one meeting between now and March 8. So next week, we're gonna go through and try to get, you know, make comments on anything you think we, you know, we should, we should do.
We can see the final motions, though, till the 7th.
Till the, till the 8th, well, to the 7th, yeah. And also, we need to have a public hearing on the DIF, which we thought we could do later in the month, but since it's related to approvals we need to make and, and our comments on the articles, we'll have to do that on the 8. So one purpose tonight is to give us some time to learn about, ask questions about this very important subject. And there's been some more work that's been done, and some more information's coming through. In your packet, in addition to the information you're gonna hear from Brian and Andrew tonight, there's also some information about a TIP, which is very different from a DIF. But I thought it would be interesting for us, because it's another way towns use to develop revenue for projects like this. And so, with that, Andrew? Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. So I guess I'm gonna talk, I think I've given you some information from the state already. The public hearing that we are gonna schedule basically is for the purpose of reviewing the map, which I think you've had some time to look at, and to vote on a development program. And I'm reading from, if you haven't reviewed any of this, there's a section that covers this, is 40Q of the Mass General laws. The development program that you would be looking at, let me just read this from the definition.
Is that in the packet? No.
I don't believe it, it's been in the packet in the past, but there's an outline, at least from an earlier slideshow. But I will get you this, a link for that. "The development program is a statement of means and objectives designed to improve the quality of life, the physical facilities, and structures, and the quality of pedestrian and vehicular traffic control and transportation within a development district. Means and objectives designed to increase or improve residential housing, both affordable and market rate, may also be addressed within a district and shall be considered part of a development program. The statement shall include, number one, a financial plan; number two, a complete list of public facilities to be constructed; number three, the use of private property; number four, plans for the relocation of persons displaced by the development activities; five, plans, if any, for the development of housing, both affordable and market rate; six, the proposed regulations and facilities to improve transportation; seven, the proposed operation of the district after the planned capital improvements are completed; and eight, the duration of the program, which will not exceed the longer of 30 years from the date of designation of the district, or 30 years from project stabilization as defined in the development program." So some of this isn't gonna apply to what we're talking about. We're not necessarily using private property, we're not relocating people for activities, so those aren't gonna be covered. The list of public facilities is something we've had a preliminary discussion about. I have a slide, again, which is, talks about some of the draft ideas. Erica, could you put that up?
The map?
The map, yep. Thank you. So on the map behind you, you can see that the, at least the area that is, we're talking about the Old South Road corridor, which runs generally from Nobre de Farm Road to the Rotary, and then we have included some of the mid-island area as well, which basically leads into the area. The area that's been highlighted in yellow is the Richmond proposal, and that's roughly around $2 million of improvements to Old South Road and to the intersection of Airport and Old South Road. That is coming out of their special permit and subdivision request. We've come up with a rough estimate of around $10 million for the rest of the work that's Again, this is all part of the development program, and there's some notes on this that talk about what those might be.
So where is the, where is the thing that's called the development program?
The development program is what I told you earlier, we need time to develop, and that will be put together for your public hearing. That will be available when we have the public hearing. That's what you'll be looking at.
We need to, we need to see it, we need to see it before that. We need to see the program outline if we're gonna be acting on it. We can't, you know, we can't wait until the night of the public hearing for that.
Well, I don't know that the public hearing, I think, we have to think about the public hearing. The date keeps, has changed a little bit, and we don't have to have the public hearing. The public hearing has to be done before the town meeting, but doesn't have to be done necessarily on that date. So...
I know, but we wanna, we wanna, through our comment section, to be able to comment on the article. And the last time we can do that is March 8.
Right. Well, originally, I think, you know, we scheduled it for the 22nd. That wasn't gonna work.
Right.
And...
And we said the 15th, because we didn't, because I didn't know about the schedule requirements.
Right. So, yeah.
Can I ask, can I clarify something?
Sure.
Our printed comments have to be embodied. Can we make comments up to town meeting and then amend it on the floor?
We can, but the, but the greatest impact people read is in the printed warrant.
Well, I just, Mr. Chairman, I understand your urgency here, but if it's not ready, it's not ready. So...
Well, we'll do it next year.
I don't agree with that.
I understood, but I'm just...
This has been a moving target since day one. It's like, we're not gonna have a hearing on it.
Well, this is, a lot of these things, this is one of the things that frustrates me, is a lot of these things are left to the last minute, and we're, you know, and we're, we're trying to figure something out that's very complex, and we're doing it, you know, I, I would have no faith, even if I loved the idea, I would have no faith that I...
Oh, no, but, you know, if you're not comfortable, oh, no. But I just, to just put it off to a year, I don't think we'll ever be comfortable enough to where you're gonna be ready to put it on the floor.
Alright, so what, what do you see now as you're thinking about the development of the DIF program? What would be some elements in it?
So on the map behind you are some of the elements that we've talked about before, which include widening the Rotary, the 1960 Rotary that, you know, is no longer of sufficient capacity to handle the traffic that goes through it, the roundabout that we've talked about for fairgrounds and Old South Road.
So I read in one of the documents, I was doing some research, that the DIF money can't be used, I'm not sure it was that, unless it's going to accommodate incremental activity. And so I got the impression that things like, things that have already failed, like the roundabout at the Enquirer Mirror, I wasn't even sure if that would be, could be used for the DIF.
No, it can be used. It's basically, if it's included as part of your development program, that money, that funding can be used.
Okay, I just saw that citation that raised that, I'm raising that as a question. And the other, the other thing is I looked in the documents that, you know, from the state, one of the uses of the DIF is for affordable housing. It's one of the, in the description of the program, one of the uses is affordable housing.
To support, yes.
And I just wondered if the six fairgrounds, as you've drawn this map, where's the, where's the town? I couldn't really tell on the...
It's in the district.
It is in the district?
Yeah.
Okay.
It is.
So the, so the six fairgrounds project could be a part of the program that we...
Yes.
Fund through the DIF.
And the, and the parking area, improvements to the parking area at the back of six fairgrounds.
So like the parking spaces we're creating now...
So, like, the parking spaces we're creating now, money could potentially go towards paving that and, and installing the paid parking?
Yes.
Infrastructure?
So, we have to agree, this board has to approve a program, uh, that we're going to get on March 8th, that's going to have a list of projects?
Correct.
Okay. And then you've got, so, um, and then you've got some, you've got some monies that you think it might take to do them.
Correct. And, and that's what leads to the financial plan, which there has to be enough revenue identified to meet the debt service, to, to pay for that.
So as this board thinks about, we're gonna get a list of projects, that, and we've estimated it to be about, um, 10 million or so?
Yes.
Um, we're, I, you know, there's a lot of thinking we have to do, if we're ready to say, "Yeah, we wanna go ahead and do these projects," and we would probably should have some kind of priority of them. So, Dawn?
Um, the, the other thing I'm curious about is the comparison between the kind of interest rates and loan programs that are available for this DIF financing, compared to if we were to just ask at town meeting to do, redo the Rotary and do an appropriation, what, what, what rate would we, would we borrow at for that?
Right. And I'm gonna have to...
Can I ask you another question, uh, as part of that, Dawn, it's a good question? We have had, what, $5 million in free cash every year for the past three years, and probably are gonna have it for the next three years, and you could pay, if this was the priority, you could pay for it in two years of free cash, and the interest expense would be zero.
Can I speak to that?
Well, you can speak to it.
Brian's gonna answer Dawn's question. Um, the interest rate essentially would probably be the same that we would be paying if we went out and borrowed it, um, through, uh, like we do anything else, because a DIF, you can actually do a revenue bond, but revenue bonds have to be separately, separately rated by the rating agencies, and they typically cost a little bit, and they cost more in interest than if we issue general obligation bonds like we do for everything else, and go through and, and back it with the full faith and credit of the town. So I don't anticipate that if the DIF is approved, and this is the mechanism that we use, that the interest rate is gonna be much different than we're paying now. We wouldn't go down the road of a, a revenue bond. It would be, it too costly to issue, and I, I wouldn't wanna pay the additional interest rate charges for, for that type of issuance.
Okay, but it would likely be the same?
I won't promise you that it'll be the same at the time we actually issue it, but it'll be relatively close to what we're doing right now, in, in terms of the market. Uh, was there, what was the other question, I think? Was there another, or the comment about free cash? I won't promise anybody that free cash for the next three or four years is gonna be $5 million, but...
I understand, I understand, but, but...
Bobby?
Anyway, that's just one, there are lots of options.
Sure. I'm sure about three things that are gonna happen here, Mr. Chairman, in the next year. One is that, on, at, on April 11th, you're gonna have two new members on the board, and that probably the priorities of the board are gonna completely change. That's number one. Number two is that in the next year, Richmond's gonna get approval to do their development. And then within the next two years, I'm hoping in less time than that, you're gonna develop this property over here on Fairgrounds Road.
Oh, yeah.
Now, all that being said, it's gonna increase traffic flow, and it's gonna increase congestion on these roads, and yes, Rick, we could make this the priority of the town, but I've been around this town long enough to know that infrastructure like this is the last thing on the priority list. This way, I know it's gonna get done. I watched all of Bartley Road get developed, and all of Surfside get developed, and we never did the roundabouts that we said we're gonna do in front of the school, and we never did the roundabout over by the, of the hospital. The hospital's doing the roundabout finally, because they're building a new building, and I guess we're finally gonna get the one in Bartley Road, because we just built the $46 million school. This will help all that congestion in this area. And these people that are gonna own these properties in these neighborhoods are finally gonna see the tax revenue from their properties help them specifically. I know you're worried about, we're gonna have to hire two new firemen...
It comes from somewhere else.
And I totally get that, Matt, but if it comes from somewhere else, that we need two new firemen, or another policeman, or two new teachers, I feel a lot more confident going to town meeting, asking for that money, than I do asking for a roundabout or, or an extension or widening of a road, so.
Well, you're asking for it this way anyway, what's the difference?
You are, but you're, but people will feel better about doing it this way than the other way.
I, I think once they realize it's within Article 8, they won't feel better.
So I just, uh...
Because it's, it's gonna impact schools.
So, that's, we could, uh, I was gonna ask, I was gonna ask a question of, so when I attended the Mass Municipal Association, uh, the governor and his staff talked about the increases for local aid, and about Mass Highway Grants, and have you assumed any, um, grant of, like, of that sort into your thinking of the cost of the scope of, of this project?
The areas that are designated a DIF, uh, do, uh, rank better in the application for grants. We have, unfortunately, have not done very well in the grant applications that we've put in. For some reason, I mean, in, in general, the Cape doesn't seem to fare very well. We have put in grant applications a number of times for the roundabout at the hospital, for example, so, um, we never seem to make the cut on that. We, um, you know, where, I, I guess, I just wanna address one thing, I don't wanna go off your question too much, but there's a reason to do it now and to consider it now, because there is not the value there. I think Debbie has done a calculation of this area, and this entire area brings in a million two or so.
Brian actually has my numbers right there.
So, um...
I think the base is about a million.
So before you, before you do that, let's, I think we had some other questions.
I'd like to hear these, this is all my questions.
Okay, you ready?
Yeah, I'd like, well, I wanna hear the numbers, I have questions about numbers.
Actually, it's on this one.
I'm learning about DIFs as we go along too, but I do know that the base value, you'd wanna establish that now, before they do all of the improvements, because you wanna capture that growth as part of your, um, the repayment. And I just ran some numbers, and I apologize, um, it's not for the visually impaired, but I used the numbers that Richmond had actually produced from their fiscal impact analysis, and then I, I just adjusted them.
And when you said use the numbers, what numbers?
They had some pretty conservative estimates of what their build-out would be.
Okay.
It's in their report, which I believe you have copies of.
In terms of their property tax?
The estimate of how many dwelling units, and they, I think they were using 250,000 per dwelling unit for the apartments, which is industry standard. Um, I think it was about 650 for the single-family homes, so that's all part of their fiscal analysis that they had produced as part of the permitting process. So just adjusting those values, they had come up with some tax projections, I just modified them with fiscal 17 tax rates, um, and we're coming up with about $136 million of growth in that area. $136 million, which was, be about $461,000 of tax revenue. So I think to Andrew's point, if you wait until after they've developed some of these, before you establish your base value, you're gonna lose out on that.
And that's, so you're saying that's, that's the Richmond, is 136 million be a Richmond?
That's just the Richmond properties, correct.
What is the value, how many other lots are captured in this, and what is the value of those?
I haven't done any analysis on those, like, again, I've just kinda been brought into the process in the last month, but, um, we do have them all identified in the database so that we can run some projections moving forward, once we start seeing some of the permit activity that's going on.
Brian, what would the...
Quite a bit of commercial included in it.
There is.
What would the debt service be on 10 million, roughly?
On 10 million?
Per year? If we were to do a 10-year bond?
Probably somewhere in about seven, a 10-year bond or a 20-year bond?
Well, 20 years, say.
Probably somewhere in the range of 700, $800,000 a year. I mean, you have a minimum of $500,000 in principal alone. Um, the, now you have to remember, that 136 or the 461 is strictly the residential component of the Richmond development, it doesn't include their retail line, or it doesn't include any of the other development that may be going on now, or any other changes. I, I mean, we basically would need to, for all intent and purposes, almost double the 136 to get to roughly where the debt service could be. I mean, we're gonna run the numbers and, and kind of come up with that too, as we work through this, but it's important to keep in mind too, that if we don't generate what we think the debt service is, we could, I mean, Andrew and I have talked about this, there's a potential to scale some of this back so that we're not, we, we can't, or something. So there is, there is a possibility to, to manage through this in a way.
I'm confused now, so, um, so that, we're not sure if the tax increment is gonna fund these projects.
Well, I don't know.
We don't know.
It's very difficult, Mr. Chairman, at this point. The only certainty we have is the estimates from the fiscal impact report, um, in terms of that. In terms of what the other changes, in terms of assessed valuation for established properties there already within this area, or what any of the additional changes that may be coming along are going to be, is, is the, um, is the giant unknown in the room as we try to do this. I don't have a crystal ball to be able to tell everybody what the property valuation changes are gonna be on the commercial side or anything like that. I mean, on 800,000, we're looking, and that's probably on the high side, but we're looking at needing another $339,000, which is essentially almost another $136 million of valuation in that area to, to make this work. I'm not saying it's not gonna happen, I'm just saying that that's what it might look like.
So if we wanna do the, the project, the program...
Yep.
And it's not generating enough cash for us, or enough that we can go borrow...
Right.
How do we, can we use, can we still do it as a capital project through free cash? Or other...
Yes. Well, first of all, we haven't, we want to get you an answer, and the, Debbie, Debbie has coded all of these properties, and we haven't had a chance to sit down. This is not, uh, let's remember the timing, and you have to be realistic on your, on the time we can spend on this. We're going to get that information for you. Like I said, it's taken a while to work out the map and get all the parcels identified. There are properties that we haven't talked about beyond, remember, this, as Brian said, this is the Richmond, the Pitt property alone. This doesn't include the properties on Gremlin, the commercial properties, it, if you, Erica, could you go back to the map?
Yeah.
There are, there are, right, the entire area of Tomahawk Road, which was the Coffin Pit, is currently developing with active permits right now that have not been captured. There are areas that have been subject to rezoning, that will allow additional lots that have not been calculated yet. There are, there's a new market, there's a new health club, there's all kinds of other uses, uh, this district was drawn specifically to capture where we know that there's growth occurring. And that growth will contribute to the issue of the roadways and other things along this corridor. That's why we're proposing it.
Interesting to see what the board members say, but, so, right now, we think it's gonna be somewhere like between 4 and 450 incremental taxes for Richmond?
Only for the residential and apartment piece, complex of their development.
So, even if it's 500 or 600, um, I mean, it'll be something, and, and, and I don't think it's gonna be enough to pay for these projects, is that a fair statement, or am I oversimplifying?
Richmond alone won't be, no.
That portion of Richmond's development will not, would not be enough to fund the entire $10 million, no. Not at all. But the rest of the development within there may be enough to, to fund it.
You know, maybe, we're not, okay. So I'm more concerned personally about the program and what, what's in the program, but I, but others may not be, so.
So where do you wanna go? I mean, I, obviously, we all, I mean, I have a different point of view, it's not, well, the program is important, Jim, and I agree with that, but to me, there are lots of different ways to pay for this, and it's, one way to think about it is if you go back and, in the last 10 years, um, of the town, and take out of the Article 8, uh, budgets, uh, $800,000 a year, and that's what you'd have to take out of the rest of the budget to make this work...
The future budget.
...without an override. And that's another way to think about it, but we don't have those numbers yet to, one way you learn from history, Brian, and I think a lot of people, when I've talked to them, start the discussion, they believe this is like a betterment, they believe that the people in the district are paying extra. They just don't yet understand it's part of the regular budget. And I'm all in favor of spending the money, that's not the issue. The issue is whether you wanna commit to take it out of Article 8 right now, and I don't think you need to, and I respectfully disagree with Bobby. I think town meeting recognizes this is a huge bottleneck, and is willing to pay this money, one way or another, over the next three or four years. If you take it, it's only 2 million a year, if you're gonna phase it a little bit, it's gonna take that long anyway, over five years.
To answer your question.
You could easily fund that out of lots of different ways.
To answer your question about where we wanna take this, I'll go back to where we started at the beginning. I want you to ask, we, all of us to ask as many questions as we can, especially if it's gonna need to take these folks some time to do, get the answers, so we're comfortable with the vote that we take on March 8th. Dawn, did you...
I mean, I, I would, like Rick said, there are a lot of different ways you could go about this, I just wanna know why definitely this is the right, this is the preferred way. I have some ideas, but I'd just like a little bit better basis.
Well, I mean, you know, I would too.
You don't have to answer that right now.
Right. I mean, if, if, if not this, I'd like to see the options spelled out, so there's a clear path and a clear commitment.
Exactly.
Because I know what you said, Mr. Arthur, in the next three or four years, but there'll be different people making other decisions at that point. And, and I, I respect, I mean, I second what Mr. DeCosta just said, who also won't be here during that time. There'll be yet another group, and this isn't the only place that infrastructure improvements are needed. There's other areas on the completely opposite side of town that continue to sort of go through the process, and, you know, if this doesn't move forward now, it's really not worth doing, once the value has already been established in this area.
But I think we know the value issue, let's be frank, if the values don't materialize, the debt service is gonna be paid anyway, 'cause it's paid out of the general revenues of the town. Money is fungible.
And it would have to be paid through the regular proposition two and a half, so...
I mean, there's no kidding about this. So, for example, I don't understand why, in the, you know, the TIP program, for example, and I would've expected that, you would've come forward this year and said, you know, we know Richmond is underway, we gotta get, uh, a million dollars now to get started on some of this. And I, you know, I may be wrong, but I think we've got a capital budget that's got a lot of stuff in it, and I think that could've fit in, and something else might have to go by the wayside, something else might go on an override, this might go on free cash, it's a different level of vote, Andrew, and I think it would, you know, none of us like driving through Old South Road. I mean, if there's anything you got us on, I think that's it.
Well, I think to be fair, this is a, this is something that the planning folks have proposed, been proposing for a while.
Yeah, but it hasn't got, but Jim, wait a minute, just to be clear again, if, if that was true, it would've come through as a budget recommendation from the town manager, and, in a sizable enough amount, to get to us, to get to the capital program committee, to get to the finance committee, to get to town meeting. I don't think that's happened yet.
Even if it did, it, it's not sexy, it's not a red herring, it's not, it's not the $500,000 for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, it's not $400,000 to move two, two dinky little units off of a yacht while you're outta here.
Well, those I agree with, I voted no on those, Bobby, there...
I did too, but, you know, we did them because it's affordable housing, but meanwhile, we're, you know, bumper to bumper on Old South Road, and it takes an hour to get from Airport to Main Street.
So let me, let me just ask, take a, take a note from Rick's comment, so will you be presenting this program of capital expenditures to the FinCom for their comment?
Yes. I'll have a, again, I'll have a draft, uh, of the information that's pretty much on the slide, which are the capital impro, uh, improvements. I don't know if we're going to, you know, I, I don't think you should start getting too invested in the, in the idea that there's not enough value coming out of this area, okay? I don't, that's, I don't think that is true, and I'm willing to go forward and bring you the, the analysis lot by lot if we have to, and again, that's been set up to, to look at.
Just to follow up, though, that my question was not about that, it was, we've gone outside, as Rick said, the normal routine to get capital expenditures recommended through the capital, CapCom and Finance Committee, and I'm just wondering, would these be, at least be reviewed by the Finance Committee?
Yes, it's a Warren article.
Well, the pro, okay, so they're gonna see project, cost projections and capital projections and timelines and...
Yes.
For each, for each of the projects?
Correct.
And this is gonna happen?
21st.
Okay. So you'll have something for us, then, soon after?
I'll certainly share that with you at that time.
Okay. Rick?
Jim, I, I would agree with Andrew, that I, I'm... Jim, I, I would agree with Andrew, that I, I'm sure if you really want to look at that as all the incremental revenue from all these projects, I, I'm with you. The value will be there. To me, that's not the issue, but I would agree it will be there. And I'm not sure it's worth spending a whole lot of time going lot by lot to answer that. I mean, it's, it, in my, I mean, Valero alone, who had a big, big hunk, when something's going to happen there.
Yeah, but, but I think this, and I, I disagree, and I agree that there's a lot of value there, but I disagree that you have to kind of look lot, you don't have to go lot by lot, but you have to know, be, sort of, I look at it, I'm worried, let's for argument's sakes, you know, what Richmond's, what, 300 houses is what we're talking about?
Between the apartments and the houses, it's 300, correct?
Two, 75 apartments, 90 something.
And so, and let's say there's another 300 or 400 here, you know, at one of the last MPEDC meetings, I was told it was like 1,500 more available. So if we're locking up one-third of our available future dwellings to pay for Old South Road, that means that that one-third of our future lots is not available to pay for firemen and policemen and teachers and everything else. And so that's where I'm concerned. I'm concerned that we are going to be committing ourselves for a long period of time to, you know, to one thing. And, and we are, and this, you know, sometimes we don't do these things because we have, there's a balance. We don't want 45 kids in a class, you know, so, you know, so I think that that's, that's unfortunately the process, and, you know, we all can, you know, disagree about the outcomes some of certain decisions and votes, but, you know, this is, once it's done, I, I'm worried that we'll be committed, long-term, to some, you know, to something that, and we'll wonder why. I just.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Once the, the improvements are paid off, then that money goes back in the general fund, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
As I understand it, Brian can correct me, is if any excess payments above the payment for the borrowing?
Yep.
Is returned to the general fund?
Right.
So it's, it's not, it's not completely, I mean, if more money is collected?
Than what the payments are.
Then that excess money goes to the general fund.
But at the same time, five years from now, Rick, if the town decides they want the money in the general fund, they can have an override, pay off the debt.
You can't use, and we, I won't say we can't, but you cannot fund the DIF program through an override, so we would probably have some steps that we would have to do to, to correct that, okay?
There's got to be a way to pay off the debt early, if you want.
Well, A, no, you, once we lock into an amortization schedule, we, we can only do a refunding on certain timelines. So if you wanted to change how the debt was paid, we would have to figure out how to extract ourselves from the DIF to do an override. You can't do, create a DIF and then fund the DIF with an override. So it, that's not a way that we could do this, so, and once we borrow the money, you can only prepay it based on an advanced refunding schedule, so we can't just decide tomorrow that, oh, we're just going to raise all the money and pay it off, and pay it down immediately. So, but to Andrew's point, if the values increase faster in this area than what we need to pay off the debt, the excess is automatically available in the general fund, and because we typically have the values certified in August, we, we would have, as we go through a budget cycle, we would have the knowledge of what, if, if any excess that there was available to, to fund some of these other things, so.
Rick, just to be clear on that, I mean, really what we're doing here, all the tax revenues from the assessment of these properties, like all properties, are going into the general fund.
And, yes.
We just happen to be taking money out of the general fund and paying the debt service.
We're.
We're sort of pretending, it's like we have a little accounting sheet on the side that we're using this portion of the money.
We're actually not really, we're not really pretending, we are actually literally carving out a portion of dollars from it.
But you know full well, if we're short, we're paying for it anyway, so you're not really carving it out.
That is absolutely a very valid statement.
So we're committing.
The general obligation of the town.
Excuse me, Rick, Don was next.
Sorry.
It's just, the way I look at it is that it is a way to get ahead of the game. We already have a massive traffic problem, and this is a way to say, okay, we are going to do these projects that fix that whole issue before we bring online more development in that area. It captures it ahead of time so that the problem doesn't get that much worse before we start capturing those, those taxes.
I have a question, can I ask? So this is, you know, uninformed quest, question, so if you have, if you're a developer and you have a greenfield site, and go to the planning board?
Mm-hmm.
And want to put in a development of houses or whatever, who's responsible for paying for the infrastructure?
What, what infrastructure are we talking about?
Roads, sewer, all that kind of stuff.
In the development?
In the development.
So.
I hear it's, I've heard it's the developer, and then, but I, you know.
Okay, so you can charge costs that are, again, this was another topic we had talked about earlier, that are proportionally related to that development, so what that development adds under certain processes. So with Richmond?
I'm not talking about Richmond, I'm talking about, I want to go, I've got 10 acres, I want to put a development in.
It depends on the scale of the development, it depends on how it fits into the rules and regulations, okay? So I can't just say, oh, you know, we cannot charge what are called impact fees, that's something that sort of.
No, I mean, do I have to pay for the roads? Do I have to put the streets in? Do I got to put the curbs in?
You have to pay for all your internal roads, yes. You pay for all your?
Sewer water.
Okay.
Internal.
Okay.
We can, again, depending on the scale and the application, proportionally, you could be charged for off-site impacts to a, to a degree.
But in this project, Richmond owns the roads, right? Or a portion thereof, or?
In, in the internal section of Richmond?
Yeah, right.
They are building all their roads, okay?
Okay, okay.
For, they're doing two, they're improving the public road that is directly in front of their property.
I understand that, I'm just talking with internal, I was just talking internal.
Yeah.
Okay. And I know it's not, I'm not, I won't ask this question because it's, so I don't stray from the agenda, but is this article, you know, there are some other articles that may be related to this, what's the impact of they, this not passing, or they're not passing? How does, how does that, I think that was a question I asked Libby, I don't know if she got that to you, but.
The, the impact of not passing?
There are some other related articles, and I know sometimes when, if X, if A doesn't pass, then we vote on B and.
Do you mean the road-taking articles, Jim?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
This has, this has no relation to any other article, it's, this is a standalone article.
All right, okay, good. Thank you.
The other thought that people have to realize, I think, is that there are other, as we build this out, we build these 300 homes, and, you know, we, the consultant said, their consultant said there were 22 students, the, we had someone else look at it, there were 70 students, 70 times 20 is 100, is a million four, so it's a million four a year, if you believe the second consultant, David Worth was higher than that, we'll pick the middle. Let's say there's 300 more houses, you're at 2.8 of costs, other costs, just for the school. Then you start adding the other costs that are involved. So if all the money from these is going just to the roads, then those other things are still going to have to be funded. You know, those kids are still going to need to go to school, and those other things are still going to have to happen. You know, we can have bigger school size, and we can do some other things, but it's, I think we have to just be cognizant that the roads are not the only cost that is going to be, is not the only cost that we're going to bear as a community as this happens. And we have to be prepared to plan those things and pay those things, and so.
You're right, but the roads are the ones that always get neglected. The schools always get funded, the policemen always get funded, the firemen always get new equipment, every, everybody gets everything but the roads. The roads just sit there and deteriorate and get crowded and crowded and crowded and crowded. And we get, what do we get, about a million dollars a year between what we put in and what we get from, from the state, was it Chapter 91? No, no, what's?
Chapter 90.
Chapter 90.
We get about a million and a half between the two.
A million and a half?
But in any case, I mean, there's no argument that our infrastructure.
No, altogether, between what we put in and what we get from Chapter 90.
Probably roughly around a million.
About a million, I mean, we get about 600.
Yeah, you're probably right.
And if you remember, that was one of our five major topics for our strategic planning was infrastructure.
So.
Rick? Let's go, the, the, just speaking on the voters, the voters approved the Boavard project, which is what, a million dollars a year, or whatever it is, for three years, or something like that?
Three years.
So I'm just saying there, there's, there's an indication to me that they recognize the need when it's presented to them. And I think this would be, you know, I'm repeating myself, but the same way.
So I think we're getting into kind of, you know, people describing where they stand on this right now. I think for this agenda item, I'm really looking to see if there's questions, factual, fact-based questions, or process, or mechanics that we can add, we should ask tonight, so.
The question that I would have, Jim, is the cost of the project, I mean, I know you're going to need rough, there are going to be rough numbers, Andrew, but also, is it going to, are we going to phase it?
I, I think that's something we can look at. We can also, again, 10 million is sort of a high number at this point, we can look at reducing that and maybe picking out, and when we meet with you.
Might be 2 million, or 3 million.
There might be, you know, two or three projects rather than all of the ones that are shown up on the slide right now, and some of the other projects could be phased through the normal capital process. You also have the opportunity to not commit 100% of the funding, of the funding, we just have to make that work in the model. You can do 50% of, and I think it's worth noting, too, that this isn't the only growth area, the new growth area. There's other new growth areas that are coming in, I mean, I don't think this is the, the highest one at all, and as you look across the island, I think there's other growth areas that are going to be counted as new growth in other locations that continue to bring funding.
Right, it'd help, add to the budget.
But we want to know what percentage, I'd like to know what percentage of it is at. You know, if we tie, if we tie up, you know?
Yep.
So many houses, what percent is it? That's, you know, that's, I think, important.
I think we can project that.
Yeah.
Give at least a guess.
Yeah, that's fine.
Any other questions?
I just, I think it might be helpful, just in being able to look back in history, is to get a simple schedule of the new growth and the related increase in assessment. You've got that already for?
We do.
Like the past 10 years. It helps put the whole program in focus, and we just should make that available as we go forward.
Okay.
I just got to make one comment. One of the things Bobby said, and I mostly agree with it, but, you know, he said the school's gotten money, et cetera, but it, but we haven't added, you know, we haven't added that many employees over the last 15 years or so. It's, it's, we're starting to add them back in again now, but, you know, for the amount we've grown, if you looked at how much we've grown, how much we spend, the number of employees hasn't grown at the same amount, you know, so that's something to think about.
Anything else? So if, anticipating there were a lot of questions that needed to come back, I was going to put this on the agenda for next week, and so maybe we'd get some answers then.
Yeah, we can, I mean, I'll work with Andrew to get some debt modeling done with, on various, various analysis and proposals.
Appreciate it.
But we'll still be talking about it on the 8th.
We won't be, yeah, we won't be voting on it on the 8th, we can't vote until after the public hearing. Thank you. All right. Next item, any committee reports?
Mr. Chairman, it's not really a committee report, but the Fisheries Meeting was scheduled for Monday, was canceled because of the Northeastern. I talked to Jared Sylvia today, who is from Dr. Pierce's office at Division Marine Fisheries, and they're going to schedule the meeting for some time, probably the end of March, after school vacations.
Okay.
Dr. Pierce has a lot of traveling that he's doing as well, so.
Oh, great, thank you.
As soon as I have a date, I'll let him.
Because we were all ready to go.
I know, we were geared up.
You had us all revved up.
I know.
We have our talking points.
I, 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 I had, I had the typical Nantucket trip from you-know-where, trying to get back here Sunday and caught the very last standby seat on the last ferry home, and got here for, to have the meeting canceled, so.
Anything else? Oh, sorry.
Just, just one other thing. This goes back to your, our timeframe up to when we have to finalize the warrant, and I think it would be helpful to us to get a sense, we approved a capital budget with a series of specific requests, and others may have different recommendations, in or out, or something. And if we don't get that back before the 8th, where we may disagree with what the Capital Program Committee or the Finance Committee says, here's really what you ought to do, not what the board approved a month ago.
So we.
We got a time issue to try and deal with that.
At our Capcom meeting, you know, we're ready to come and make a presentation, can't come next week, right?
I don't think so.
I think he's away, but, and we, I would just try, so if you all, if you all want it before?
Seems like we're going to need a meeting on the 1st.
Well, I'm just saying.
We're all going, not going to be here.
Let me just give you, let's pretend the dredging project isn't in for Bobby, I'm just making one up that I knew I could find somebody had.
We keep, we want his head not to explode, watch out, Rick.
And, and we say, wait a minute, we want to change, we don't accept that.
Okay.
Then what are we going to do?
So we should ask him if he can come back, come on the 21st.
Or, at the very least, gets a, a piece of paper to us, like if it's all done.
So we have the Capcom report?
We have the report, can we just see the report?
Well, and, and show the differences between what we approved and what the, if that's their, ineffective, they're recommending a new budget, or a different budget, Jim. All I think is, we ought to know what the differences are.
When you say we approved?
Well, the board, the board had a presentation from the town manager, said, here are the 27 items, and we voted that night to say, yeah, and they moved through the system, but.
All right, so they've changed.
Well?
Okay.
Need to come back.
We've got some changes.
We want to know what the changes are.